And.
Sorry.
It's okay. We have the final release and acceptance of the jail control project. The retainage is the fourteen thousand. We also, we do have them under contract, a maintenance contract for five years as part of the, that's part of the bid. But we don't want to hold their retainage and all that for the five years while they do the maintenance on the system. So that's the release and acceptance of the contract. Item four is a small works contract between us and All Seasons. And that's for the HVAC systems for the courthouse. Well, yes, we'll be signing, we approved the contract to be signed for a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. But we actually won't pay anything or receive the units till the spring probably.
Um.
Which one are they moving over here and from where?
Their.
Ten unit they're moving from somewhere?
Yeah, we bought a brand new because the unit went out in WSU. Where the seniors are now. And we had to put a new unit in there. We don't want to waste that unit. It's broken, you know, it's got one year on it, so. They'll either move it with this contract or we'll do something different and put it up, but it will go on the roof of this building eventually. So I'll sit and buy another unit when we have. Okay, we have some pay estimates. Pay estimate number six, the lead contractors for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, forty, four hundred and seventy-one. And. That is for, of course, the courthouse entries. We have pay estimate number four to grade works and a total of four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And that is for Old Mountain Road. And pay estimate number eighteen, the Kirby Nagelout for six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars. And the last one, pay estimate number one to Interstate Concrete Asphalt Company, which is doing business as American Rock Products. And the amount of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and nineteen, and that's for the Roosevelt Grade Project. Think that, I think that's it for pay estimates. Yep, what do you know? So, construction program, Old Mount Contract, the contractor's finishing up on the bunch list. Very nice road out there. Um. Grant-funded signs and guideposts in West Darlin', they're both waiting on signs. Nobody seems to be able to make them or can't get the products to make them, so we're waiting on that. Roosevelt Grading, grade project paving started today. They picked a good day for it. And they'll be paving this week and next week depending upon weather.
How much moisture can they get? Before they have to suspend?
Well, once you can't get the tack to break, then you, you don't, or you get too much where the road. You'll end up creating a slip plane.
Right.
Between the two lifts and then you don't want that. And you could see where it's happened in the past, like out at. Glenwood Highway. When it was starting to Dlam before we rebuilt it or we repaved it. And that's for putting it on. A lot of times the tack doesn't break.
Right.
Or it's too wet and you create a slip plane.
Okay.
So we're hoping over there, we probably won't get too much.
No, yeah, I'm wondering if it'll make it that far. We are supposed to get some moisture later this week, so.
We are, and if we do, we'll just, we'll shut down and they'll be ready.
That's what I'm wondering. It's a lot of times it, that's, yeah. It will evaporate before it gets that far.
True. The nice thing is that they have a plant sitting out there, so they're not going anywhere till they're done painted. So they won't be shutting down, which we can run into with other. Uh, Courtney Road, we're staking the center line for review, so we can get out there and look at that. Click and tap path, we're contact, we're trying to contact Parks and Washdott. Uh, problem with Parks though is, is some of the people that were, are no longer there. So we're, we're working through who we know is still there. And Washdott, we're trying to work with them so we can get permits to work at both of their, ultimately that project is done on both of their right. Um. Courthouse parking lots, we're continuing the design. That covers us for our road. We, we actually have a lot of, uh, sign requests and speed limit change requests. So we're do, going through the studies on those. We've had quite a few of those just recently. So we're looking at that. Maintenance projects. Uh, the crews. On the, on the east end are grading roads and we're ditching rock creek grade. On the west end, we're grading roads, brushing and mowing on Courtney and Sleepy Hollow. Uh, upcoming, the facility stuff. Okay, civil site work. Contractors still working on prepping. Out here, we should get results Wednesday or Thursday, Wednesday late, Thursday early. Which will determine how big of a dig out we have. I think we have a plan for some cost savings on that. We're holding. And, you know, depending on what we're doing. Man, but we, I don't even want to guess what the dig out, dig out's going to be until the week.
How did they figure that out? Did they run a pipe in it to take core sample to, to know how much they gotta do or?
What you, what we did is we dig out, you do test pits.
Right.
And you go in all directions and then. They make a determination what the level is of the, of the contaminant, and then they say, okay, you gotta go all the way to here, all the way to here.
But for depth, you just dig until you're not in the gooey stuff anymore?
We dig until either that or until we hit solid rock.
Or the stink goes away.
Or the stink goes away, correct. So we're down about ten feet. Yeah, I was hoping it didn't move, but.
I know. Gravity unfortunately.
Works against us.
There you go.
Way big.
Right before they fill in that hole, we should go bury something. Then somebody else will dig it out later.
There you go.
Yes, pay it forward.
Literally.
Literally.
Put a fuel tank just with water though.
Yeah.
So, yeah, by next week, we should have something. The flooring, we actually got the tiles, they're scheduled to begin installing them this week. Uh, furniture is almost complete on the third floor. They'll be starting on the second floor, have started today. Um, interior doors, uh, we're, we're still installing the dolls and the windows and we're also Kirby Nailout is obviously installing door strikes now too. But electronic doors. Electrical, we're wiring the cubicles. As they get put up, we're trying to keep up with them. Uh, moving, we discussed before, uh, they're putting in the commissioner, the schedule to put in the commissioner's AV system this week. And we're training the staff on, uh, our staff, they're training our staff on the heating, cooling. Today they're doing the generator training. So there's a lot of things that we have to be brought up to speed so we can take over the building. Um, Annex five, everything else is pretty much the same and still a little ways out there. Annex five. We look, we reevaluated the estimate. Um. And so we cut out all, because when we did the first one for two, that was a complete, they move in, the building's what it would be forever. So I sat down with Ron Iger, okay, we reevaluated. So, or I reevaluated, that sat back down, reestimated. So we could, we can patch the roof as opposed to replacing. That's not uncommon to do that. Um, they're not gonna get, we're not gonna remodel the inside. That was a big cost, that two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand. So we're not gonna remodel, it's gonna be what it is. And that can solely be brought up. You know, you cut the carpet, we'll roll, roll it up. And then when we put the, and then we just put it back down. And staple it back in, it'll be fine for what they're using it for. Uh, same with the sheet rock and all that, but like I said, again, we were gonna do the complete thing, that was the cost plus the paved parking lot and everything else. So after doing all that, we got it down to a hundred and eight thousand dollars. They will, they will take that.
Okay.
If you guys are still on board. They're gonna pay for the hundred and eight, and I think there's forty thousand that goes against the project. To tear it down. And a few other things. That, the forty, the hundred and eight also includes the contract we have with the contractor for forty-five thousand dollars.
So we'll have no money in the, other than the.
Other than the stuff that comes with the building, yes. The, the tearing it down and the movie.
Right, right, which we would have to do.
Which you would have to do it.
Right. Wow.
For our new parking lot. Yes.
Okay, well, that's. That's much more palatable.
Again, they're not gonna get a turnkey situation, but. This is livable and doable. And Ron's gonna talk to the fair board tonight and see, he thought they were a go. They had a hundred thousand already budgeted, they get that extra ten thousand from you guys. That they would put towards it, hence we were under that a hundred and ten, so. If you're okay, we'll keep moving forward unless they say, unless the fair board says no, but I don't foresee that.
Yeah, I mean, yes, but.
So the forty thousand for teardown is not included in the hundred?
Yeah.
That's the forty thousand we were assuming we'd have to pay for that as scheduled and are. Budgeted for MP.
Right. Is that forty thousand including? Uh, leveling the grade and paving and the whole layer?
No, not the paving. No, that, that's a parking lot, that's different. The forty thousand is just to remove, remove the building basically. And, you know, pretty much you would pay that almost under all the circumstance. Well, if you demoed it, you would pay that too.
Well, whereas if you sold it, somebody else would pay it and they would. But I can donate forty thousand to the fair, so I'm okay with that.
Okay, appreciate that. It helps our schedule. Okay, um, courthouse entry. Um. We are fit, the south is open again and will now remain open permanently. It's done. The east side is closed because we're working on the vestibule, we're putting up the vestibule and it's just with the parking lot, people aren't gonna get there anyway. And I just assume not have them swinging stuff over people's heads. So we're closing the east and north, they're working on, they should have that done by the end of this week sometime, maybe the middle of next week and the north will be open. And it won't be long, the east will be open. Uh, within the next week and a half, two weeks, we will be done out here with everything. As far as the entryways, not the parking lot, we're still waiting to know. We're still waiting, yes.
For a super fun sight or not.
Well, I don't think so though. I don't, I think we're, we're.
Tanks were that big.
No. I. They weren't that big, no. Uh, HVAC replacement like we talked about. Um, radio sites, I really haven't had that much time to work on that. I'm gonna try to get, uh, get that established so we keep. Though, and at least try to hammer out that agreement. Okay, other issues and follow-up issues, um. Oregon Trolley Rowley, still going good. We've got just about everything worked out with them, scheduled for the fifth and sixth. Trout Lake Park, we had some vandals destroy our coin boxes this weekend.
Not sure to get the coins?
Yes, the thing is we outsmarted, we took our, our attendant takes them out every night just so this doesn't happen.
Put a sign up.
It says, it's all gone, don't waste your time.
They destroyed them anyway, so what we did is, is we closed off the shit, because we're not gonna get the coin boxes this year anyway. So we closed off the upper showers, because that's where they were, pretty gutsy, because that's the closest to the park attendant. And so the showers will still be open on the, on the lower bathrooms. Until, uh, the end, the end of October, and then we're, we'll, we'll blow out the line starting on the twenty-fifth. And turn the water off at the park. And then the Santa Can, or the Porta Podies come in on the twenty-eighth. And then we'll leave the park open with that, only that facility, only without the water, because if we don't, we end up, the water freezes and we end up with a lot of repairs. And so we've been doing that every year. Um, something else we've done every year, and this helps us plow the towns or provide better service to towns, actually get to the towns. We've hired two temporary snowplow operators, one for Glenwood. And one for White Salmon. And they help plowing, um, the towns. The cost is, if we don't have a winter. You know, we, we hire them because you can't get them, you can't let they, we have to bring them in. If somebody, we've tried in the past to hire and call them in when we need them. When we need them, somebody else.
I, I have a question about the towns. Do we actually provide snowplow services inside the limits of the town?
Not the city limits, but we do in Glenwood. Um. Uh, click a tat.
I'm talking White Salmon, Virginia Golddale.
No. We do, I shouldn't say no, because we do have.
Some shared.
Some shared stuff, but if we're plowing.
You said White Salmon, and I'm trying to figure out why we're running a snowplow White Salmon.
No, I was act, sorry, I was referring to more of the, the, uh.
I incorporated areas of.
Yes. Yeah, town of Beesie, uh, Houston.
Community of.
Community, uh, correct. No, no, so we'd like to be able to hire those, those are advertised for those, there's no guarantee we're gonna get them. But I do know there are some people without work, so there's a possibility we should be able to fill those. Again, what they do is we bring them on December first, like we have in the past. And they work with our crews and we keep them through mid-February or so, depending on if we get the snow. And once we know that this, we don't, we don't have much of a chat for snow, then, you know, they go.
Is this forecasted in your twenty-twenty-two budget?
Yes. We, we, we keep this in our budget. We never ask for more for this.
So, um, to go back to the Trout Lake Park, um, the dump station has the costs of forty-eight, fifty-four, is that because you? Everybody dumps in the dump station and then you guys just pump the dump station out? You don't have a drain field there for the dump station?
No, it's a big tank.
Okay.
Yeah, we paid it, pumped it out. We used to, that was the only real drawback before we got the park attendant. People, you know, word got out that that would be a great place to end, clean out your RV for the end of the season. So. We used to get ten dollars and have, have to pump the tank, yeah. We don't have that anymore, we have an attendant there, so. But that ends up getting close too, because there's water associated with that, so. And again, if people want to do that, that's fine. They paid the ten bucks and they pumped their tank out.
Well, I'm just trying to understand, we get, you know, the dump fees of two thousand, the pumping fees is five thousand, that's quite the, uh, benefit for those people.
It is, it is.
How long's it been since we changed the dump fee?
It's been a little while. They used to be five bucks and we upped them to ten. A few years ago. I can bring that back to you. No, exactly. We upped them to ten. And we've kind of kept them there at ten. Yes.
I mean, if these people dump it on the ground, well.
You should cover services.
Okay. So before we move on though, I want an answer on the maintenance.
Yes, please, please.
I'm, I'm, yes. For snowplows.
Yeah.
I shouldn't say maintenance techs, the, snowplowers.
Yeah, the temporary snowplow.
Operator.
Okay, I have one more. We have a maintenance tech at Goldendale that has resigned. And we'd like to fill that position. So. For, for that if we could.
I'm once again gonna say I don't want to make hiring decisions until we get through budget, but that's just me.
I mean, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are paid out with dedicated.
And we, for this year it's budgeted, and next year we're showing that we, we show the same thing. So. And kind of just for everybody's, our staffing level in, in the road department is really based on. Winter services. It isn't based on what we get done in the summer. I mean, that's important. But it's based on winter services and each one of the guys has a route. So if we, you know, any, and I'm not saying you can't cut, but any cuts means you reduce services.
How many guys, how many guys have a route?
Everyone, I don't remember exactly how many people, every person has a route. Yes, has a dedicated route. And then we have the, the piecemeal stuff that we fill in with the temps on the west side, because. Years ago, we had a, we did actually make a cut in Glenwood. And that's why we always bring back the temporary person to fill, so. Somebody can plow the town of Glenwood, because if not, what they do is they plow everything, the arterials, and they come back and service the town. Not overly, uh. Not overly, uh, well-received by the towns. And that's all we have, all I have on the list. Oh, oh, that, sorry.
One more, can I hand, handwritten note now?
Yes, handwritten note. Uh, high school equestrian team. Has requested a fee waiver. Now, I don't, I have the information, but we like to prepare it formally for you. So I, I'd like to, I just kind of giving you the heads up in case they pop up during. Uh, citizen request, a citizen comment period, I don't think they will, but we'll actually prepare you something formally, what it's gonna cost. And what we're looking at in Lula. We also have the same thing for high school rodeo too. And both of them have requested, uh, fees be waived on, uh, the winter riding. As we schedule winter riding. But we will bring, I will bring, we'll bring those back to you next week on what the cost will be. And that, this plan is.
Anything for public works?
What options do we have for the firearms training facility to get it a little closer into, um. Alignment with cost versus expense for revenue?
I think our cost, we haven't had any normal years because of the closure to the bridge. And then, of course, we had nineteen was a down year. Twenty, we had COVID, so we lost a few months. We really haven't had a year where we've been open the whole year. But we've had costs because we have an employee out there and we have, so we haven't been able to offset that cost now. Our, our use has gone up. It, our definitely use has gone up. Um. Because we had twenty-five last weekend even with the bridge closed, which is pretty good. The other thing we're reaching out to is, um. And that's why I was looking at originally moving it, moving, if, if the fair board didn't want that. Didn't want Annex five proposing maybe moving into the gun range. Because, um. And we're gonna, we're starting to reach out to groups to actually rent the range during the week and give classes. There's a lot of self-defense. Classes, first-time gun owner classes and all that. That we can either lease to somebody to do. Or we could provide, because we have the people with the, with the qualifications to do that. And so that can bring more revenue in also. So we're looking at expanding that. We've also reached out to law enforcement. As they lose places to shoot. They've talked about using the range. I know the tribe has been interested in it, Parks was very interested in it, but you know, with the shakeup now. I don't know where they are. And Tribe is still trying to get all their stuff together. To actually come and use it. So once we start, we could start lease renting it to the law enforcement agencies too. As a way to break more revenue.
And so who goes out and does the marketing for this? Is that the person that's out there at the range?
Yeah, we've reached out to the law enforcement agencies too. We actually are, you know, our sheriff is pretty good at getting the word out. Um, about the use of the range. And, uh, we get a lot of people that come in and just look at it, because it's still, they're, the, the rumors that fly around are just kind of crazy. I mean, we get probably once a month or so, somebody comes in and says, well, I thought this was just for the Washington residents. You know, people, so there's a lot of that, and we, we have posted some stuff on the internet. We now started an archery shoot, so that should break more money, you know, that should bring more people, and we're a little on the tail end of that this year. But next year we'll start out, so that brings in more people, and that was. The fees aren't as much, but the cost to set that up was, you know, just a few targets. So it's a lot, and we get, you know, we charge five bucks a person to come in. And, you know, we don't have that much money into it, so it was, it was a burn pretty quick. And you're seeing that already in the cost. Of what it costs to set that up, so.
You got the brass and the surplus action there?
Well, I gave all the information to them, yes. And that should be another revenue. I mean, I don't know what it'll generate. I heard different stories of what it's going for, but.
Give that to.
We. Yes, I gave it to Greg, yes.
Okay, I think it needs to be on my list too.
Okay, I'll send it to you also, sorry. I'll get it to you also.
And then in terms of the revenue abatement, what does that mean?
It's a environmental thing, and it's a dollar. Each, each shooter is charged, and so the, the, the fees are fourteen dollars and the abatement's a dollar.
Okay.
You have to pay the, the, the money has to be set aside. In case the range was to go under years from now, or at a certain time you can abate the lead. And that was just, that's an environment. That's an environmental thing. It, it's, it's really kind of, it's, that's what, that's what DOE like to see, but ultimately. Somebody will pay you to bait the lead.
Yeah.
It has a value.
That's right, so that's another revenue.
Exactly. But we have to show it as, yeah, we're, you know, prepared for the worst situation, we're putting money aside. Also, at the time, the port wanted that too.
So what I'm, what I'm seeing though is it's a dollar for abatement, so we had eight hundred and seven people use the range last week. Whereas it's five hundred the year before. Where, what are we on track for this year?
I don't know, I know it's more than eight hundred. I don't know what it is, I'd have to look. I.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't your long-term plan to have a gun range run that thing so we don't have to favor that level?
That is very correct, yes. We're almost to that point to kind of look at, maybe go out with an RFP potentially to look at that. Um, you need, you know, and, and there is, I know there's a gun club interested. So that would be, that would be an option.
Well, that would be, the sooner we can get there, the better, because this is this right now, to me, it looks like we're, uh, people are paying fifteen dollars a head and it's. And it's costing us on top of that another fifty-five dollars a person to go and shoot. That's, uh, that's quite the dollar.
That is the second thing one of you said. Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything?
We're liquefying our.
Yes, yes.
He? Yeah.
How you doing?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your service.
Can they get the back on two seats?
No, he gets to join the event.
The only issue with it is it would be better, Clickitack County was actually, uh, wasn't the state, it was the county?
Except we think of ourselves as the whole.
This is nine one one dispatch, and then we have some that we got made for, uh, fire EMS that are around the whole county.
It's the official.
Those are purchased by the individuals. No, that was the firefighters, EMS, dispatch, got together, did group orders. So, good morning. So, I was gonna do a little later, but I think it's appropriate to introduce our new chief ops, and as of yesterday, nine one one coordinator officially made that transition. So, Roberto Ontebary and Phil. Refer to him as, so, welcome, Phil. I'm still trying not to overwhelm him. Okay, nothing on your consent agenda this week to discuss? A few things that may be put on your consent agenda for next week. And the public safety radio system. I think this is one of the first times that it kind of wavered, it is functioning mostly normal at this time. We have the silent key on the fire channel that I mentioned to you when I was here last night. Uh, is, is continuing, we believe we knew what it was, and it was on the Oregon radio project, or the radio system, to make some changes in their microwave firmware and software. They did that two weeks ago and did not fix the problem. So, now we're back to the troubleshooting phase and trying to determine what is causing that, at this time, we believe it may be coming from the Kesar Ridge site and the firebase station there. So, continuing to look into that, but it does cause silent keys on the fire channel on a semi-regular basis. The trailer repeater issues that I reported to you last time I was here, um, once we did some mitigation efforts. There's been no more issues reported. That doesn't get used heavily, so, don't know if it's just because they haven't had the opportunity to be out there in one of the difficult coverage areas served by that or not. But, um, as of now, nobody is saying that it's not working properly. And I have, I have no, nothing that tells me that it is. On the maintenance side, the annual radio system inspection report was completed, and I have had a chance to do a cursory review. Some things that were pointed out to me in the very beginning, uh, even before I got the written report. Or the critical operational safety risks identified. That's a Clickitack site, which is the newly transitioned site or location, I guess, radio room inside the Clickitack Fire Station. Um, and those critical risks were all had to do with bunch list items that were still not done from that move, and so since those have been dealt with. There were three other sites that had operational risk conditions that I'm still reviewing and looking into how to deal with those most effectively. And the other eight sites had no issues reported. There are still things out there. Operational risk conditions that retain the facility's maintenance, so at a certain point, I have to be reaching out for some help on that, Public Works probably. At this flat top site, it's one of our more remote and higher elevation sites that takes punishment in the snow, as you know, the security fence, but now they're also, the shelter has had some separation of the exterior sheeting on one side, and there's and that's the seam that's starting to split, so, we need to look at that before we get any further damage.
We have a carpenter.
Do we? Excellent. So, I'll be working with Public Works to forward some of that stuff onto them and ask them for their assistance and how to address that. Radio site lease agreements. In all honesty, I haven't had time to do anything on any of those since the last vote. Given the conditions. Any questions on the radio system, current operations and function? Public Safety Radio System, we've got the basics from Jeff, um, waiting on the survey to be done, and the data there to get into the negotiations with the new landowner. I am now providing, as I mentioned to you last time I was here, providing, uh, Rule Seven Fire Commissioners with monthly project updates that I receive from Deputy Director Hunter. Because they're more than interested in getting that site fully operational as soon as possible. If I had better coverage for them. Nine one call taking, and public safety radio dispatching, this is where I get to turn over this section to Phil for the first time. Go from here.
So, um, the phone call volume numbers, you'll see the report is slightly different than what had been reported in the past, and these are just incoming calls. So, total nine one one calls, uh, thousand one hundred eighty-eight, non-emergent line incoming causes twenty-seven hundred forty-seven. Of course, that does not include outgoing calls, which the dispatchers spend about half the time doing. For staffing conditions, we're continuing to, uh, emergency staffing continues. So far, we haven't seen any real issues with filling in. Everybody's pulling together and making sure that, uh, we have the adequate staffing, um, going on. Currently, we have one communications officer in training. She came in with some experience in, um, north, the Florida, the, the Florida.
Arkansas.
Arkansas, that's right. Yeah, one of those. Yeah, um, so, it, we expect her to, uh, to finish up training fairly fast. She has the experience with the call taking and the dispatching, uh, unfortunately, that county where she worked did not have technology. So, they did everything by paper, so, that's rather interesting. Right, yes, so, but we, we expect our training to wrap up here in the next couple of months, and we're working on trying to fill two full-time positions and one casual. Still receiving applications, unfortunately, uh, we're competing with several other agencies in the state and that are very short-staffed and because of the size, pay a large larger amount than what we do. And we're also competing with agencies in Oregon that are hugely understaffed as well, so.
Yeah, last week's, uh, gorge, PSAP meeting day, so, so one of the Oregon agencies reported that now, I think it was a state level official, so there's four PSAPs in Oregon that are at critical staffing levels. I think I reported to you a time or two ago that there was one on the east side of Oregon that had less than half of their original staff. And they were calling for help under the state-to-state mutual aid, but now there's four in similar conditions, just in Oregon.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, it's gonna get worse before it gets better.
Yeah, yeah, and, and one of the things that we're, we're trying to figure out is how to get more applicants, how to advertise the, the job. Uh, it's not, it's not a, uh, a career that everybody thinks, so we're trying to change that and promote that.
And also, there are, we can compete with, like, Arkansas, this county in Arkansas, we got our last new hire from, I, I went to her personally in the last two weeks and said, you can hold everybody you used to work for, or work with, then see if you can recruit them, you know, they, they're much better working conditions, better pay, all of it. Of course, there's a different quality of life here as well, but also a different cost of living, too, so. But she's gonna try and entice some of them.
We're trying every possible route, so.
And we posted a new advertisement nationwide on the, uh, AppCo sites. Paid for that advertisement.
I wonder if the, the community college has a job posting board for people that decide they don't want to be in school anymore.
We might be able to reach that, yeah.
Something I hadn't considered, yeah.
And, and one, one of the other things I've, I've been trying to do is get into the school, because not everybody goes on to college. Um, and so, picking those individuals right out of school. Our, our last intern was really a, a good, a good fit, she would have been perfect, unfortunately, she went off to college, um, however, uh, at least she was going to apply for the agency there.
Her last week, she has, she's applied for their dispatch at the college.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the enclosures, because you can take it anywhere, but we're hopeful that, uh, once she finishes college, she go come back in a few years and, uh, apply back with us, so. Yeah, it's, it's hard, but we're, we're working every avenue that we can. We're also, um, this week, we're gonna be working on, uh, filling in the lead communication position that I held before. And so, not much changes for, for that, uh, we're trying, we're hopeful that we can promote within. And that person will, um, also be filling in shifts like I am now until we can get up to full staff and then take on those duties full-time, so. But we need the help, so, um, and, um.
Have you talked to, sent it out to all the fire departments to ask if there's any volunteers that are interested in stepping up to the next level?
Yeah, yes. Fortunately for us, I think our job is really hard compared to firefighting, which I'll agree, you know, but. Yeah, trying to get more people. Um, and then, uh, considering scheduling options in light of the potential vaccination mandate effects, uh, we're not sure with, uh, the state doing what they're doing and us receiving substantial money. Uh, if there's anything that's gonna come from that. If that happens and we're forced to do that, um, our staffing levels will drop down significantly, bear, we may only have one person for a large part of the day. Um, that would, that would be, um, I'm not sure what the word would be, but that would be ugly and scary. To say the least, I know, um, thankfully, we're not state patrol, state patrol is going to possibly one dispatcher Vancouver area, which covers, uh, Clickitack, Skamania, and all the way around. Yeah.
One dispatcher total, or one dispatcher?
One dispatcher total per shift.
Per shift.
Per shift, yeah.
How many, how many do they currently run, two?
No, they, they'll run, uh, three or four, or some things more.
We're doing what we can to be prepared for.
Did that come in yesterday for state dispatch today, or is that in effect now, or?
Yesterday was the deadline for state patrol, yeah.
And so, so do we know what the outcome of that was, though?
The information I have from the local sergeant, uh, our officer in Goldville, that serves Maniac, Clickitack, Barben County, was that he is down to four troopers now for that service area, and that they have been told that we're ahead of time, that, that for good portions of the day, they'll have one dispatcher on duty, uh, Vancouver Dispatch for five counties, I was told. And, um, they've been instructed to do everything except for emergency radio traffic only on their MBTs and their vehicles. When they have, one comms officer staff, they'll call out on traffic, and otherwise, it's emergency traffic home.
So, we're still to see what the fallout is gonna be, uh, transferring costs to them, uh, they may not get answered right away. So, that's gonna cause a delay for us in holding those calls, and we're still to see what the outcome is when there is no state trooper to respond to calls within our county.
Is there anything we can do to help them in the meantime? We still have staff.
Yeah, we, we're still good, um, but we're not sure what that, you know.
We have to see where it goes and then see if they, you know, make a request for any assistance to help them with their call volume. We have never had an agreement with state patrol. The troopers use our radio system and our dispatch services on occasion when they can't reach their own. But that has just been a, you know, in a, in a mutual aid assistance realm. We've never had a formal agreement with state patrol, or Fish and Wildlife, State Parks, they're all dispatched out of WSP dispatch in Vancouver. But when, when our center, our nine-one-one services fail, they roll over to Skamania first, and when Old Gorge fails, then it rolls over to Cressa, and they share that workload with the state patrol as well. So, like you said, like Phil said, we're waiting to see what the true ramifications are, and it's only day two. If they make some requests, but I've already reached out to that sergeant, said, you know, if there is some need for us to provide service to the state troopers, state parks, fish and wildlife, more than we've traditionally done. When they had no other officer safety. Well, no other avenues to reach their own dispatch center for after safety purposes, we've always answered their call. We need to have an agreement in place, so he was gonna talk to his supervisor about that.
The foreshadowing for us is it may be hard for us to find employees with so many job opportunities out there for dispatching, say for them. There's gonna be more competition for dispatchers essentially, which might make it harder for us to fill our positions locally anyway.
And we're already seeing other PSAPs that are, that have traditionally had lower staffing than us, that had a harder time just before any of this started, uh, filling positions. Now, they're going dipping even lower, and they're offering signing bonuses on other incentives, as well as one center that I know of. Has, because they're below half staff, they're offering five thousand dollars for a one-year commitment from their current staff to keep them from leaving, so. Yep, best thing for us is either to get a lateral, like we just did, from another state. That sees the benefit of moving here. Or to hire someone that's local, wants to stay local, and teach them from the beginning.
So, aren't there, if about eight to ten people right now, as of today, that's currently has these skills that used to be out of Vancouver that would be available, if we reached out to them to say, hey, would you guys like a job?
No, I have not.
It's a pretty easy spot to go.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can do that, we will be.
Turn around and, and X number of weeks, and we're under the same mandate, and then we, uh, yeah, but no, I have not done that, so.
So, no matter what, we're gonna be in the same boat, it sounds like, or we'll be. No matter what, we're gonna be in the same boat, it sounds like, or we'll be down to one anyways, but if we can backfill our open positions with. People who are experienced, who are probably pretty pissed off at the state right now, it sounds like a pretty good uh recruiting scheme.
Yeah.
Something to consider.
Definitely. Yeah, so many things going on. To sell those, but I think uh one of the best options is. Yeah, like Jeff said, is recruiting within the county, the people that wanna stay. So that we don't end up training somebody for another agency. Down the road, so. Um, other than that, um, operations and training, but we're, we're trying to. Continue on our training and keep our skills up uh in the nine one one center. Working on uh. All the grant and administration for myself and catching up to that and making sure that this coming year. We absorb and utilize uh every, every money out there that's available to us. So I'll be working with the with the state coordinator's office to get up to speed on that. Working on nine one one phone system update projects. The state is hoping to move to text nine one one. And among all the things that we're working on and trying to to do, that's another project. Moving slowly forward, um, but. I'm working on getting that done uh before the December deadline that the state would like to have. But it's not a for sure thing, um, among, among filling shifts and everything else, we're trying to catch up from the last year.
And the reason the state's pushing it is because they wanna do a statewide campaign that says every county piece up. In the state is now texting that one capable, you know, text if you can't call a statewide advertising campaign. I appreciate that. It's a great thing uh for them to take that on, but we're not, we're not going to just. Yeah, disregard our primary critical uh mission priorities to. To fulfill that artificial deadline by state. Do we have the technology in place to accept it? Once we get this newest phone system update, then everything will be in place for that, yes. But it is a process of coordination and testing with the uh the nine one one as a net provider and so on. Yeah, there's significant amount of coordination and work for us to to make sure that all gets. Ruled out properly.
So will the once that rolls out, will the communication be only be a text? As far as you get the nine one one text, are you responding in text?
We we can, yeah, the.
And then how does that work? What little experience I have being out there is I know. Is that, are, is the other officer on duty gonna be able to see that? Cause so much of. You know, I I, I mean, I really noticed that out there is that the other comms officer is sort of paying attention to what's going on. Over here, even though it's not their call, they're still kind of monitoring and and maybe helping is what's the, what's the. You know, if I can't, if it's, if I'm all silent going on and.
There will be a a little change in communication uh right now, so when I, if a text. And then one month call comes in, the first thing that other agencies are doing is. Finding out are you able to speak? If you are, call in and let's leave this, you know, because if. There is a delay in typing back and forth versus a conversation, right? And with new, the new generations, they go to text. Right away, so.
That's their default.
Yeah.
And the whole advertising campaign is, is that if you can't call texts, but if you can, call, call.
Yeah, and so our communications officers are really good that uh even on a phone call right now. Um, they will repeat key words out loud to get their partner's attention. Um, and that's what we pick up on is like you, you said what? Right? Um, and so um I anticipate the texting would be the same thing. They would read out loud part of it. To communicate to their partner, hey, I have this going on. Um, and and that's where we picked up. And then we're, we're kinda yet to see if two communications officers are able to see that. Because we haven't, we haven't seen that capability yet, but.
Just like on the calls where anyone at a station can log into the primary call taker's call and listen in. They should also be able to log into that text and and see. Until we, with this new phone system update, you know, see the realities of that. My number one concern for all along and why I've held off is that we take so many. Calls from Oregon that we have to transfer, that if we start getting a significant number of texts, which. One of the reasons that I'm okay with it now is that all these agencies that have already switched to nine one, uh text to nine one. Saying that there's just a very small number of texts that you get. It's it's not something people are starting to use. A lot yet, but if that happens and we can't transfer that text to the call, right? It belongs to someone in Oregon or Skamania County's dispatch, then our comms officer is stuck as a relay. For their dispatch, their call for however long it takes to resolve that call. And I'm not okay with that. We don't have that luxury of staffing. And it takes, takes up one of our comms officers' time to handle their calls if we can't transfer it properly, and that's a technology issue.
So with that text, do we, there's a comms officer, then see like a GPS coordinate where that's coming from or what cellphone is? Or do you still have to let them know where you are?
So uh we have, we have technology to see GPS, however. Uh, that technology depends on how many antennas you're hitting, how many antennas your cellphone is heading enable.
So that's not GPS then, that's, that's cross location.
Right, it's kinda triangulating your location. Uh, if you are in a more populated area like Goldendale, then. Uh, we do have a program that's called Rapid SOS, um, and it will detect the information on your phone that. Um, any wifi connection that your phone is picking up, even if you're not actually connected to it. Um, and will pinpoint your location to a more accurate point, um, sometimes within feet or inches. Um, but if you're more rural, then that becomes more sparse and unreliable. So the, the best will always be to give your location. You know, getting that location from the caller is is the best and.
So it'll pull in your wifi, but it won't pull up your GPS signal.
Or if you have, if you, if you have a phone that's GPS enabled, then you have it on, then it it can use that data. Otherwise, it's using the cell carrier's triangulation data. And you can, you have apps on your phone that there's before that as well, but if, if the user has chosen not to share their GPS data. Then it doesn't come through the nine one system.
It can be as really reliable or not at all.
Or you get the location of the cell tower that they're hitting. That happens, yeah.
How many off topic just came to my head, how many phone calls did nine one one receive with the latest little Goldendale incident?
Oh, I'd have to look into that data. You mean over the weekend?
Slammed with phone calls or was it?
I did not get in filled, nor I got a call on that from ours. It was a city call, so. There was nothing that indicated that dispatchers would need uh supervisory assistance, so. It did not rise to that level in their mind. I would have to look at the records.
So, um, yeah, we're working on those updates, um, text and then one month project phone service. We did have a phone service outage in the Glenwood area on September eighteen, that's at about almost five hours. Six, six AM to ten forty-five, um, and on any outage like that, we work with the fire departments to fill. Staff their stations and that becomes the, the default is hopefully that citizen needing, having an emergency will go to the station.
And emergency management and nine one public education side, that's what we've pushed out to the public for a few years now. If you can't get through on nine one, go to your local fire station.
And that was century length it went down?
Correct, we went now, but yeah, century length, yeah, yeah, and, and it happens on a semi regular basis in Glenwood. It happens more in Glenwood than anywhere in our county that will lose phone service. And then typically they'll lose all phone service, not just nine one, but that's what we're concerned with. Sometimes, as in this incident, because I dealt with that on that Saturday morning, uh personally. And I was in contact with the fire chief to do some testing. They could dial local numbers, but not long distance, so that they could dial the. Local non-emergent number out of White Salmon and get, if they, if they dial that number, they could get into dispatch. Otherwise, they could not get through on nine one or our regular non-emergent one. They staffed their fire hall for a number of hours yet before it was resolved. And according to William, and that affected the entirety of the valley, it's about two hundred and forty-one customers.
So, um, on that, on that, um, another project we're working on is with Sentry V. They have um several capabilities where if that happens and they still have. The phone system within that, that community still works, but not reaching out. Uh, we're working with them to default that if somebody calls, it will connect to, for example, the fire hall. Um, so that, you know, they may not obviously be able to get up and go to the fire hall and say, I need an ambulance. Um, so we're working on that project and uh the, the second half will be educating and working with the fire departments. To, to be a backup dispatcher essentially, and once we do that, we might go recruiting them as well. Mass casualty and set them can project, um, so that's the A F six and.
And I'll take up that one as well, but the EMS call response status, um, that I, I mentioned to you last time I was here at least. Um, we are seeing that as we suspected that the EMS district is taxed to the point where the local fire districts EMS responder. Are having to respond more and more often alone, or not alone, but as a single agency. And in the city of Goldendale over the past three weeks, it's happened several times and in which at least three instances. The uh ambulance was coming from so far out that the local aid vehicle took the patient to KVH. Before the ambulance was anywhere near. State law allows for that anyway, yeah, no matter what, I think it's a. If the uh ALS ambulance is more than twenty minutes out, the uh aid vehicle can transport. Because most of our fire EMS aid vehicles are not licensed transport vehicles under the state rules. I think, um, is there just a handful, Glenwood's one of them. Pickleton, some of them have chosen to do that, have that ability, but most don't. And so now we're seeing that have to uh transport by aid vehicles, it's actually becoming a reality.
Is that because EMS is on the way to Portland or what, what's going on?
All the above, increase in medical calls in general, so multiple medical calls, especially in the go greater Goldendale area simultaneously. So the Goldendale ambulance goes out, the Dallasport ambulance um. Comes to Goldendale for coverage and either before they can get here, there's another medical call. Or they get here, there's another medical call, and then there's a third medical call, and White Salmon is either staged in Dallasport. For a coverage, the whole county at that point, or the whole EMS district, uh excluded fire district two and ten. And the last one that I heard was uh. The White Salmon ambulance was going through Lyle when the call dropped for another uh medical in the Goldendale area. And so that's when Goldendale City Fire transported that person. They did their assessment. Communicating with the ambulance over the radio to make those calls, give a patient update and so on. So we're seeing that, and like I said, it takes, uh, you know, it's a little more, by far the least concern. But it does involve more work for the comms officers because they have to do multiple paging and then more radio traffic and coordination. But the EMS district and the, the fire districts and city departments are working through that. I just thought it was worth making you aware of it. As I do also sit on the EMS district board, the next official member, although I've only been able to attend or. Chosen to attend one in the last year. Availability, but um those are some of the challenges they're facing right now. And our whole EMS system. Um, the mass casualty incident also pertains to uh not only nine one dispatch and how we do that. Job, you know, mass casualty incident, but also in the EMS district world, more specifically. Uh, as I mentioned before, that plan was out for approval. I received the email last week with the approved. Plan and supporting documents, one of which I haven't even shared with Phil yet, is uh what that. Oregon and Washington group decided to do for dispatch phone recalls and. I'm just a little disappointed that we didn't have, I don't think anybody on the, on the Clickitack County side of the river. Got to have the final say approval. I didn't get to vote on it, but maybe I missed something. So we'll see what's in there and see if we can live with it, because the last plan was wholly inappropriate for the way we do business. But I, I believe that sitting on that committee when I was available to do so, um, that it was in the right direction when I last attended a committee meeting, so. Looking forward to having a better plan. Those incidents at the very least. And also follow up with the, uh, I guess Phil has not yet had any involvement in this, the fire district users agreement renewal. All the two fire districts have returned their agreements, one of which um got lost in the paperwork shuffle and, and I've been assured by the. Fire chief that his board and himself have all signed it now and it's on its way back to us in the mail. As of late last week. And then click at that fire district number five, Centerville commissioners have uh refused to sign for multiple attempts. We've uh addressed their issues through the fire chief, my counterpart. That evidently wasn't good enough for them, so they've. After we reached out again, they said, no, fire chiefs uh report back to us, wasn't enough, still won't sign it. So now they're requesting a meeting and come to one of their fire commissioners meeting. I've already spoken to Commissioner Christopher about that. I'm waiting to hear back from them as to when that is scheduled so that him and I can attend that and.
Which district is this?
So Centerville, fire district five. Be trying to work through that as well.
Are you still on that fire button?
There's a meeting tomorrow. I wonder if they'll tell me what they want the other meeting about.
As a commissioner's meeting or a firefight?
It's just a regular, twice a month fire meeting.
Yeah, I'm, after our conversation of the day, I'm still waiting to hear back from the secretary. Any, any questions about nine one dispatch function?
Nope.
Burns Management Program report, then, um, I'm sure you're getting regular updates from. The health department and you, you aware that we deactivated the O C, still at. Uh, level three monitoring, however, we continue, myself and the program coordinator, continue to receive and fulfill requests. Uh, for more and more things, um, not just P P E, also hospital staffing, test kits now. Their, their requests are coming back. To a level that we hadn't seen since uh early this year.
How are you in fulfilling requests and hospital staffing, how are you having anything to do with hospital staffing?
Forward that to the state E O C that has to go through the county.
So they can tell the state how many were short on or critical on or.
Correct, yeah, all requests from stakeholders within a county have to go through the emergency management department of that county and then. Uh, we enter them into the state system as requests and facilitate that back and forth.
Okay.
And when it comes to P P E, they deliver it to us. And then we have to get it delivered out, which is a change in operations since the pandemic. Used to be that they would ship things directly to the requestor in the county and the emergency management didn't have to deal with it. And I'm still uh working to maintain. A reasonable stockpile of P P E supplies. Uh, the state sent out an email, you know, last week or the week before, state D O C sent out an email indicating that. Apply for what you need now because after October thirty first, um, we'll only be taking requests for of an urgent nature. Uh, so they're trying to get to a base stockpile and then. And I believe that, you know, they'll be downsizing their staff as well, but then they won't be ordering anymore, they'll only be giving it out for critical needs. When you absolutely can't get it for yourself and. The uh, the wait time to get it for yourself is is longer would put you in a. A critical risk for staff safety and so on.
Do you have any storage room left?
No, no, the container is clear for, and we still have, uh, I think at last count was three or four pallets at Real Seven Fire Hall. Thanks, and uh, yeah, most of the things at Real Seven are for ag producers and schools. So, big five gallon container, hand sanitizer, things of that nature.
Which next year we can use for holiday punch.
One thing that we still, and I'll get to it later, uh, under the. We're still working on making that P P E purchase under the uh emergency management program grants, special for COVID. And we got the. Counterfeit masks and ninety five masks that are for the, you know, the highest level for healthcare workers. Um, we're still gonna do our best to get that purchase made by the end of the year. That's been an ongoing thing to deal with that counterfeit uh mask purchase and return. And now I think we've gotten clear of it enough that. We can repurchase actual N ninety fives, add those to our.
Are you not getting N ninety fives from the state stash? I mean, you can you put in a request from the state to get N ninety fives and get what you want anyway?
Maybe, we put in, uh, Skyline submitted a request for, I can't remember how many thousands of gallons. And that was submitted last week to the state and they came back yesterday with the, nope, don't have those anymore. Um, we have not recently have not put in a request for any I ninety five. Uh, the reason that purchasing, that I'm continuing to move forward with this purchase of N ninety five is so that we have our own supply of them. Because those are, like I said, the highest level of protection that they use in the hospitals, health clinics and so on. But anybody downstream that they're could use them if they run out of whatever else they're supposed to be using. And yeah, if any agency in the county couldn't purchase them for themselves. Or at least in a timely fashion to get them before they ran out completely and we couldn't get them from the state. It's it's my intent that we have enough local supplies that would cover that for a period that they can recover. And this purchase is all grant funded, if I don't make this purchase, we give six grand back to FEMA. Yep, neighboring counties, it's on the rise, there was five COVID related deaths in Yakima County over the weekend. Report, their situation reports daily still. Um, any other questions about the pandemic? Emergency manager. Uh, wildfire season report, um, as you know, the burn bans in all three zones expired as of midnight on October fifteenth. So last Saturday was the first day it was legal to burn, uh, do outdoor burning. And yesterday, uh, someone started burning slash in the Glenwood area. And their piles escaped and burned through log and slash. So the fire department can contain it at a half an acre and because it was in that heavily logged area in the slash. Heavy mop up and they called in the D N R for assistance. So if you don't burn responsibly, it is still not a good idea to be burning brush files. Yeah. And I'm still have yet to get to updating the county code on how to burn. Be a good thing when I can get to it, uh, hopefully for next year.
So so when they called in D N R for heavy mop up, did D N R send that person a bill?
They could, yes, and so could the fire district, any escaped burn. It's like, well, actually, no, I did hear on the radio that it did cross fence line and onto adjacent property and was, uh. There was a grass fire associated with it, so, uh. Yeah, the, a lot of times when it just affects their own property, you know, the local fire district. You know, that's what you pay for, right, your property tax. But if it gets to be a bigger concern, then they start looking at charging for actual suppression costs. Both the fire district as well as the D N R. And I don't know if this was a D N R permitted slash burn, I didn't get into that level of detail. But I do know it was an escape burn pile, or actually, what I overheard was multiple.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think it was one pile, I think there were multiple.
At least three, yeah. Um, and the um emergency notification system and adding I pause to that system. Um, we're just on hold for now, we are having to consider, I'm having to consider changing our emergency notification system vendor. Because of the the issues we're having with that system and its functionality. User friendly it is for both the customers and us to send messages and so on. So that might be something that we bring before you. Um, you know, late this year, early next year is to change those vendors and current contract expires in February. We believe we've identified another vendor that has a better project, uh, program, sorry. Training and exercises on hold for other priorities, program grants, you can read those. Uh, there's a long list of them, but basically, uh, new E M program coordinator is, uh. Working diligently to meet the deadlines for anything that is pending soon. Getting those projects wrapped up and completed so we don't sacrifice any of that grant funding. Too good, last date deadlines. He, again, on the emergency notification system side, he uh reminded me that might be a good idea as. People transition out of the courthouse to the new county services building. To update our system, but also transfer all those folks, whichever offices are moving. To their new location because we have county employees in our system by building and by office. So there's a situation in a building or a specific office, we can send those county employees a message specifically directed towards them. So we have groups created. So unless you have any objections, it's that it was approved by the board to uh to have those I D cards, they're not mandatory. Uh, but the I D cards and the E N S sign up. And we work with, um. The H R department at K C, so when new employees come on. To get them signed up in the system so they can be notified from active threats in any of our facilities. Uh, to also include the weather closures in the winter time, close county offices and so on. So unless you have any objections, we'll move forward with asking the department heads and electors that when they transition to the facility. Have all their employees update their information. Okay, thank you. So, the emergency management program coordinator's position, um, I'd originally come to you in the. Structure review with uh recommendations for updating the structure, one of those was to. Increase the emergency management program coordinator from halftime to three quarter time. Since we've had that person on board for a couple of months now and. Been able to see what the actual costs are and what the grants will allow and work through some of that with the uh state. We've determined that we can cover the additional wages and benefits with grant funding that exists. Not using any additional local money out of the one twenty seven fund. Yes, sir.
Yep, so chosen. Would this grant money that you're wanting to use to fund this position. Not cover the cost, but could it be applied to a new dispatcher position?
No.
So it's here.
This is emergency management program, yeah, it would be, we'd be using it for, instead of like equipment purchases. For certain things, um, either. Like our mobile command post vehicle and and the outfitting of it with radios and computers and all those things. Right, you know, it's all emergency management program. Yeah, but it would be switched to do some of those things and now that we've got that vehicle and the E O C. You know, at a place where it's functioning with the proper equipment and and technology and so on. To staff time to do the preparing, planning, public education and outreach and just to keep up. With everything that needs to be done that I.
So you're asking for zero county dollars?
That's correct.
Is there a possibility that some of the things that this money could be used for? You were mentioning equipment, different stuff that, so we won't be using it, or at least some of it for that. That that could come back later and now I. I mean, there's always the, you know, I don't, it's, I mean, you understand what we're trying to get to is that if we're, there's only so many dollars. And if we're spending it on wages and not buying this other's equipment, and then later we really need this equipment, we know where that's. Where that ask, where the ask is gonna come from.
And to cover this increase from half time to three quarter time, um, we're not using all of the available grants. Still not using it all, right, so there'll be funds available for equipment purchases. Uh, what I have done is gotten to a point where I've gotten the E O C and the mobile command post, you know. Emergency management specific uh facilities and resources that we're, we need to have for countywide response. Taken care of, I guess I'd say, um, and some of the last purchases we've been doing is for. Law enforcement and fire districts that have had critical needs for portable radios. It's what, two years ago now, or three?
How long is this grant good for?
These are reoccurring grants, you know, the the state homeland security grants, uh, renew every year for a three year period. And then the emergency management program grant is annual.
Are these grants that you're using to buy these radios and what have you? Is any of our landfill dollars going to those same radios and what have you?
No.
So it could be used to offset revenues the county already puts in.
No, no, in the fund one twenty seven, fund one twenty seven, it's all the inner local money. County puts in their amount, the three cities put in their amount, and and that budget is right at twenty one thousand dollars a year for local funds. Everything else of that is grant funded through FEMA. So what I'd be asking today, uh. Is if I could have verbal approval to change that position and it's, uh. Through a resolution next week on your agenda, if you can create the resolution, Casey and I get on your agenda for next week. To increase that position to three quarter time. Or if you don't want to entertain that, then we'll just drop it.
I'm I'm okay, I mean, I'm personally okay as long as with the, you know, it's always the the dollars are there, that's okay. And there's not, we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul, even if I like Peter. Or, or I get Paul. I guess I did like Peter.
I I I guess I would say it's a grant funded position, if it turns out to not be, then we'll have another discussion.
Yeah, absolutely, that would be my intention.
And as long as we're not, yeah, shifting county dollars in to remove this there, then that then it is a grant funded position.
Correct. And that, like I mentioned to you for months now that FEMA is talking about, you know, changing the way they they do things. And the requirements in the uh for grant projects and having them competitive, at least at a state level. If that's the case, we all, we still have a better chance of getting our project approved for personnel time. For the preparedness, planning, public education and all those things, uh, competing with all the other E M's in the state than we do for equipment. And other sustainment costs because the way that FEMA is moving their grant requirements is towards the. Personnel costs and not sustainment of systems and equipment, so. So that's that's all what's I'm doing in the background and, I mean. Trust me, it would be my intention, if it ever becomes the, an issue that those grant funds can't sustain them. But yes, it would come back and we'd have that conversation. So how to provide additional funding, not just, well, in fund one and twenty seven, there's no options because there's not enough local money in there to do anything with anyway. In reality. Except for the basics, there's like a dollar per person in the whole town of local funds. For all the emergency management program activity.
That's just insane, but.
So this is the way I. Fix that.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else, I saw some nods, we got one, yes?
Yeah.
Excellent, okay, I'll I'll move forward with Casey. Thank you. That will make things better. You know, that door makes everybody seem a little bit angsty.
If you don't push it open wide enough, they'll smash you.
Yeah, that happened to me last week. Okay, so how, oh, we got like three minutes left, so I'm not, I'm not prepared to give a full presentation. I apologize because I know it was. Oh boy, it was last January, February, when you asked me to provide you with a presentation for sustainable revenues. For the department, specifically nine one and the dispatch and radio system functions. What I have been able to confirm is that the enhanced nine one phone exercise tax is at its maximum amount. Yeah, there's no, no room left to collect anymore. On the emergency communications, sales and use tax, um, that is a one tenth or two tenths. Um, and as estimated by the treasurer, it's three hundred thousand per year per one tenth. So either three hundred thousand or six hundred thousand per year estimated revenue from that tax if it were to be. Approved by the voters. And that whole entire process, um. Including, uh, reviewing and negotiating or affirming the contracts that we currently have with. The cities and the EMS district for users fees. Um, of the system, because that's a part of the legislation that requires us. To review and negotiate or affirm the terms of each user's agreement with other government agencies. Uh, and that process is a year to a year and a half, you know, including getting it on the ballot and so on. And then. And then realizing those the beginning of those tax revenues. The other option is the users fees for the fire districts. Apparently they're the only ones that don't pay users fees. And there are different ways of going about that. So this is like half of my file on that. A lot of it is so complicated and complex. Every agency in the state seems to do it a different way. And there's complicated formulas. We divide this by that percentage. And then there's a call per call charge and per radio charge. The clerical and then finance accounting related paperwork that it adds could be significant unless we do it strictly by population. And I, I was not here when the three contracts that exist with the cities and the EMS district was instituted. And I've not been able to find any of his personal document that tells me what formula they used. But it was population based and a set fee. And when, and then when I got here, the expenses were outstripping revenues so quickly that I immediately negotiated an annual increase of three percent on those contracts. Otherwise, there's, we had no chance of, you know, keeping up with anything.
So how did we, so you have no idea how we came up with the numbers that we use now for those?
If you back out the math, it's between eleven and twelve dollars per person in those, in the cities. So the total amount that we charge them now for their twenty twenty census data is, comes out to, yeah, like I said, eleven dollars, between eleven fifty and twelve dollars. Can't remember the exact number. Per person in that service area and that, but that for the cities, that includes law enforcement and fire, which most agencies charge more, but not all. I've solicited all the data from anybody that would give it to me from other P S apps in the state and the way they do users fees. And whether or not they collect the emergency communication, sales and use tax as well makes a difference, right? Because they split that up in different schemes. So, yeah, if you do it by population, that is the cleanest and simplest from additional work on, on my staff and myself. As far as users fees go. But otherwise, like I said, it can be based on per call for service. Per radio call that they make.
That seems very time consuming to chase.
Oh, there's lots of, yeah, the data.
Per person is a much cheaper.
Administrative position.
Yeah. But we do it by population. Yeah, we do it by population. And, and so that's going to be kind of hard for the fire districts because it, the census doesn't break down the data for fire district, whatever. Because they get their funding, as you know, by the real estate tax. They're not real estate tax, property tax, excuse me. Re, that's a whole other, so. Which, by the way, I didn't put in here, we're continuing to see that revenue volume of the REIT. So we're going to be over budgeted in what we anticipated for REIT revenue. However, yeah, the population base, if we do population based and we like the EMS district right now, it's a it was also kind of hard to determine because the EMS district doesn't cover the whole county. They cover, they don't cover district, fire district two and ten. So if you adjust the county population by estimate of how many people live out there, roughly two thousand. Then we're charging the EMS district seventy eight cents per person in their service area. If we do that math for the fire districts and take out the city's populations, the county's total population without the cities is around fifteen thousand. And so we're, we're, our revenue from all the fire districts at that population base would be around twelve thousand three hundred and some odd dollars, which is like I won't make any first judgers, but it's, it's, it's already starting a contentious relationship between me and the fire chiefs because we're considering users fees. To institute users fees of any kind is just going to complicate matters several levels. However, I will do whatever I'm directed to do. I would say the population based users fees is the best way to go about it if you decide to do so. Otherwise, it would add a significant amount of work to figure out all these different percentages and tall numbers and so on and do that billing.
You think it's going to raise twelve thousand dollars?
If we do it at the current rate that we charge the EMS district, if we do it at the rate that we're charging the cities, which again is for law enforcement and fire and EMS, if they provide it. Like I said, that's at that eleven dollars and seventy some cents per person in the area. Then that's about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. However, there will be, my belief is there will be several fire districts come to you. Not, not only complaining to begin with, but also asking for waivers or grant, you know, what, what's it called? The economic development grant.
We giving ourselves our own.
And that's the reason that the board in the past, always it's like just trading, because if, if we go through with this, my personal belief that that just puts the tax burden back onto the fire districts, the same people that we collect tax money from as the county. And the fire districts are going to be faced with having to increase their tax levies to their citizens to pay for this user's fee. The, you know, the, the, the most difficult among them would be like Fire District fifteen and thirteen, Waukeah, and, and Appleton, their annual revenue for Waukeah is around fifteen thousand and for Appleton is around thirty one thousand. And, you know, you had a user's fee of anything. And then they're just trying to pay for their insurance and their building and truck maintenance with those dollars around. So like I said, I'm not, I don't want to get into my personal opinions too much, but users fees will complicate everything. That's my, that's my profession.
Well, that was a good enough update for us to decide where we want to go.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
They just got to come up with some kind of thing to pay for the future radio drivers, then you'd be fine.
Well, that is, that's the emergency communication, sales and use tax. It's specifically what it's for. Only, only, if that is instituted, it could only be used for emergency communication systems and facilities. And I'm still trying to drill down and get somebody to tell me on the record whether that includes wages and benefits for nine one, you know, call taking and dispatching or not. But as now, the, the nine one one call taking grant covers wages and benefits almost entirely for half of our comms officers that we currently have, so five. As well as the chief of operations, because it's also the nine one coordinator pays for those wages and salary and benefits.
But would you be able to use some of that money and literally bank it in a fund balance?
Yes, for when, yes. Yep, that's what it's used for traditionally. Yep. Future equipment and facility replacements, but it all has to be emergency communications.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, no.
Thank you.
Hey, welcome to the family, but you were already in the family. So, yeah, so no excuses. You know exactly what you were getting at.
I knew half of it.
Okay. Or you were shielded.
As Jeff mentioned, he's trying not to scare me. There's a lot of things that.
Or scary stuff.
Yeah. That had not come up that I'm, I'm learning.
No, yet to be determined.
Yes, yes.
It's, it's like boiling a frog. You seize him into it.
Right.
Put him in the cold water and then turn it up.
To reset. To recess for lunch. We'll be back at one o'clock. All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passed. And it's one o'clock. Hey, I will call the meetings of order. Let the record show all three commissioners are present. We'll start the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the business agenda as presented.
I will second the motion. Give a motion in a second to approve the business agenda as presented. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to be approved of the commissioner meeting minutes for September twenty first, twenty twenty one and October twelfth, twenty twenty one as presented.
I will second the motion. Okay, I have a motion in a second on the September twenty first and October twelfth meeting minutes. Any discussion on those? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. That brings us to citizen comment. This is opportunity for citizens to address the board of commissioners on items that are not on the agenda at a later time today. So we will start as, as our new tradition in chambers, we have folks in chambers and so we can start, actually Susan was ahead of you, Ms. Kelsey. Let me get my. Yeah, I do, I guess.
Go ahead. Good. My name is Susan Kelsey. I live in Goldendale. And last week, Mr. Anderson set a, a meeting, a town hall meeting in White Salmon at the Pioneer Center. And from what I understand, and I want to confirm that that meeting has been canceled.
Yes, ma'am.
And it was due to
The fact that the people that I was going to be meeting with, I heard back from them that they did not feel that it would be conducive and, and safe meeting for, for them based on the people who showed up in the room and whatever meeting that was and that, that they didn't feel that it would be safe.
Okay. So it was their decision to cancel the meeting?
Uh, it was from a conversation I had with, with multiple of them.
Okay. And so I, I really wanted to be clear and on record about this. On September fourteenth, a group of protesters came in here. And if I understand that the meeting was declared illegal. And Mr. Sodder left the room, leaving Mr. Christopher and Anderson in chambers. I'm talking with the group. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that I was on the fourteenth. I'm, I was not a part of that group and I emailed all three of you to indicate that I was not a part of that group. I believe very strongly in not mandating vaccines. And that has been my stand and I have been civil about that numerous occasions when I've been in chambers with you guys. And, and the people that have been protesting with me and have acted in accordance with the rules here and have been civil as well. And so, and I felt it was an opportunity for us to be heard in this meeting. And I wanted to make sure that we were not being lumped in with an unsafe group of people who would make that place unsafe. And, and so that's why I'm here today to make, I'm sure you understand that there are many of us in this county who follow the rules, who, who do it respectfully and civilly and would never do things that happen like on the fourteenth. And so if you choose to have another meeting, um, I don't know where that unsafe would come from. I've been in here for over a month and a half now, and I have witnessed all three of you being aligned, lied to, threatened, and it has never been through me or my colleagues who have been protesting.
You're correct. Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to go to online if there.
Gabrielle.
Gabrielle Gilbert, go ahead, please.
Yes, hi. I understand that the public meeting that Jake was going to, that there was a confusion about what was a private meeting set up and what became a, and what a public meeting was. So what I'm asking is that the restart on the public meeting is that Jake, we would like for you to make a commitment to come to us quarterly to the West End, to the Pioneer Center or through Zoom, where you are on a quarterly schedule of meeting with your constituencies down here in the West End. And that is one of my requests. The other thing I want to talk about is you have online on the commissioner's website, the strategic ten year plan for economic development that you crafted. And nowhere in the plan is there a discussion about daycare and daycare opportunity and making that available. And I, I think that you have to amend that strategic ten year plan by placing that in to that aspect in. You cannot have economic development. You cannot speak about, you know, just housing and, and, and a lack of trained workers and how you're going to make the county viable economically if you do not have the component of daycare and childcare in that. And I, and I think it's telling when the, when that commission is predominantly men who are making those policy decisions and that you literally omit childcare. And so I would really like to see that corrected. And then finally, on the nine one one emergency calls, we are not, to my knowledge, you have, they have not set up a new contract for fish and wildlife. And I believe that we, that emergency nine one one need to go into negotiations and fish and wildlife need to come into negotiations with you, with nine one one on, on getting those wildlife calls diverted to fish and wildlife and taking and, and them commanding that position of addressing wildlife conflict in the, in the county. And I'm, and I, and I'd like for Jake to give some follow up with that, however he needs to do that. So but, and definitely for all of you commissioners, follow up on the childcare situation and why it's not seen in the strategic plan. And then finally, Lynn Mason is still waiting for an apology for the obscene gesture that was held in that chamber a few weeks back. And the women of the county would like to see that and hear that. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. I'm going to go back into chambers. Go ahead. People have come up, they've asked to be able to do their public comment back to back.
We still pull our masks down?
You can't. I'm going to put six minutes on.
Okay.
I'll let you know when you're halfway through so you can switch. Go ahead.
Debbie Wagner and part of CESE. This email was written by Commissioner Christopher, was done on a county email and sent to many citizens.
Many being how many?
It just says, I just said many citizens. Okay. It just never seems to end, no matter how many times I try to warn people of the kind of horse they are hitching their wagons to. And the damage he is personally causing to the solar ordinance cost. The Board of Commissioners has had multiple reports, once again, that Mr. Wagner publicly verbally attacked Mochi Winblead on the morning radio show the other day. This is dated the October twelfth. No, I'm sorry, September twenty second. But this time he went too far by making racist comments in his attack. Here is what they all said. He said that she, Mochi Winblack, was Chinese, like the company trying to install the solar farm and that it is having the fox the fox in the hen house. the fox in the hen house. And something to effect that we should be hiring Americans because you can barely understand her because she doesn't speak English. Also statements of hire American and buy American. Mr. Wagner has now publicly shown himself to be a racist and a bigot. I will make sure the world knows this on a radio show tomorrow. And in releasing this to the press, Mr. Wagner, the founder and head of CESE, is now on the record as being an untrustworthy, untrustworthy racist and bigot. For the record, Mochi Winblad is one of the kindest, smartest women I know. To the best of my knowledge, she isn't even Chinese, but comes from a neighboring country. But really, what difference does that make? I would take Mochi for a neighbor, friend, and American over Mr. Wagner any day of the week. We, as a community, deserve a full public apology for this attack on Mochi. And Mochi deserves far more than that. Just thought I would once again remind you of who you are hitching your wagon to, Dan C.
Clarification. Too many emails. That was one of them.
My name is Greg Wagner. I'm with CESE. This is just another attack in a series of unprovoked, brazen, uncivilized attack on a citizen perpetrated by you. It is based on false, unsubstantiated, and hearsay information. This attack on me is defamation of my character and the use of the words racist and bigoted and untrustworthy or liable. These allegations are all false, and I have proof. You have harmed my reputation and caused distress and attempted to discredit CESE. Will you issue a public statement retracting your false allegations? RCWs and WACs are state laws which apply to elected officials and are to be adhered to. I am asking the prosecuting attorney, Mr. Canal, to review these laws and make a determination if you have violated them. Then take the appropriate action. Your conduct illustrates a pattern of inexcusable behavior, and you show no remorse. This can no longer be tolerated. Therefore, I am asking for your resignation immediately.
Thank you. Does that conclude your comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I gave you your time. Now give me my time. In that email, I said members of the public and people in this building told this board it was you. Now, whether it was you or wasn't you, that's not for me to determine. I said in that email with quotes what they said. Not what I said, what they said. Now, whether it was you or not you, that's not my call. They said it was, you say it isn't. That's fine. But even if it isn't you, I deem you fully culpable for it because it's your actions, your attacks on this board, and Ms. Lindbad that are bringing about the hostile radio in general. So whether you believe that or not, that's your call. I will say, and I wasn't going to, but I will say, but your twisting of the facts and twisting of the truth to fit your personal narrative and your illegal actions of wiretapping phone calls with Mr. Walsh and then playing them for me until I have to tell you, don't, because I don't want any part of your illegal activity, is the reason I no longer support CESE. Now, if you want to deny wiretapping phones, that's your choice, but I'm pretty sure you can find that in RCW, too, sir.
Well, you're wrong. And I can show you proof that I wasn't the person that said anything on the radio.
I never said, I said they.
You shouldn't even be putting out any information that you can't document, Dan. That's what you do all the time.
Okay. I'm gonna move us along.
Very hurtful.
We're still in citizen comment. I'm gonna go to online. Two online in a row to make up. So raise your hand, unmute yourself, get our attention. Not seeing anybody. Okay, so if there is no one online that wishes to provide public comment at this time? Okay, I'm gonna come back to the room if there is somebody. Okay, go ahead. Please give us your name for the record, please.
Kathy Moko, Goldendale. I just have a quick question. Follow-up from last week. A man asked about the fact that the Department of Transportation went out. All the men have left. So it's getting to be winter, and do we have any plans to pick up the slack and file the state high rate?
I would say, to my knowledge, at this point, we do not. There is, there's no plan for that.
Is there any precedent for doing that? I don't think it's ever done or.
No, this is most unusual, but it happened. And the only person that the DOT is the super. All the men have left. They've lost their jobs and most likely will lose their retirements and all kinds of things.
Yes.
I was told by our public works director that three individuals are still there and three have been transferred from Vengeance to the Goldendale shop.
That's kind of my interpretation of what's gonna happen is he's probably gonna, the governor is probably going to transfer people from other areas to our areas, people that are, you know, places that are 95% vaccinated and transfer them out here at least temporary until they figure out what the hell's going on. But it's one of those things like Dave said, it's out of our wheelhouse. They don't inform us. They don't keep us up to date. We could ask nine million questions. They're not gonna give us the answer. We're just as worried. I know I am. And I think it sucks, but yeah.
I work on the piece of the pie that I actually have.
Right. Having worked there for a number of years, I know that the state and the county and then the city don't work well together, and they don't share. We tried to change that, but it's just been quick example, they close 84, that diverts all the traffic to 14. Now, it would be nice to call Vengeance or the main office in Goldendale and say, we're doing that. But that's been, normally, that normally would not happen. So it's been kind of difficult.
So we've been dreading this day for a long time. WSP lost 127 employees in the state. We're seeing that in DOT. What I'm seeing on the articles is that the state is saying that over their entire force, they will continue to provide the services. The levels may not be at the, where they were, but they will do everything they can. And so that's, that's what they're saying. The next few days will, will show what they can and cannot do at, you know, the state level, especially with, you know, the State Patrol. And then, yeah, I'm sure that the state's gonna have to move people around when it comes to roads and everything and try to rehire, backfill. But we all know how hard it is to find drivers right now or anybody with a CDL. You can, every one of those guys, I'm sure, probably have a job in a week.
Yeah.
And do you think they're gonna come back if they get another job? I mean, this is the things that we have to worry about this time.
Okay, we are still in citizen comment. I thank you for your comments. I'm gonna go back online and see if folks have changed their mind. I don't see any. Raise your hand, unmute yourself, star six if you're on a phone. I'm not seeing anybody. So we'll come back in chambers if there's somebody that wishes to provide public comment.
I can respond to Gabrielle's. This is a response to Ms. Gilbert, who asked that I do quarterly meetings. Ms. Gilbert, on the West End, I attend the community council meetings regularly, at least quarterly amongst them between City of White Salmon, Houston, BZ, Trout Lake, and such. If you'd like me just to host a quarterly town hall where people can come and talk and ask questions, I'd be happy to do that. In terms of childcare, childcare has been on the radar, and commissioners have been working on that for what, the last 15 or 20 years? That you're well aware of. And that is, that is one thing that we have always focused on. And I know many times when I worked in the Economic Development, Natural Resources Department, childcare was always up there. And everybody was going to meetings on childcare. Our Economic Development Specialist continues to go to meetings on childcare. So just so you know, just because it's not part of the economic development strategic plan does not mean that it is not on the radar and very high of the flagpole and what we care about.
Yeah, I would echo that. I mean, it's something at our next Economic Development Council meeting, we, you know, could see it just to add more. I don't know that it needs more you know, press or more. I think everybody recognizes that it's a critical issue around economic development. It doesn't do any good if you've got, if we create jobs that people can't work at because they don't have any childcare available. And so we, we all know that. But if it, if it needs higher visibility, then I guess that's something we could talk about.
I would agree. I think we all think that childcare is a major importance of the monthly childcare meetings to get moved to the first Wednesday of the month, starting next month. But anyway, yeah, I think it all comes down to interpretations of childcare and having the money or the resources to do it. And that's just kind of where we're at with that.
Okay, we are still in citizen comment. I'll go back online.
Gabrielle's got her hand up again.
I'm actually, that's a set. I'm gonna give everybody else a chance first, Ms. Gilbert, and then because they've been. Yes, so we are in citizen comments. So if you've just joined us, this is an opportunity to provide a public comment to the board of commissioners. If you wish to do so, raise your hand, unmute yourself, star six if you're on a phone. I'm not seeing anybody. People are uncharacteristically quiet. Mr. Eldred? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wish you would consider taking a second look at all the, at the problem. It's solar development is moving for the county. You guys have ignored every kind of safety item, every precaution that is involved in this. I mean, Cypress is not an upstanding company. There's a lady in New York that, Mrs. Bogga, that went and had her proposed lease agreement looked at and spent thousands of dollars to have it researched. And it was full of loopholes and decisive language that could be interpreted two or three different ways. Feeder, New York, Cypress promised them $70,000 a year for their city. And they paid him the minimum tax, $7,000 a year. So you're dealing with people that are professionals at writing contracts and leases that they can manipulate. They're one-sided. And do you think that they're gonna treat you any different? Do you think that decommission thing that they're throwing at you means anything to them? I think, you know, you need to take a look. I don't know, maybe it's your guys' dream to see thousands of acres of black glass. Maybe that's, oh, that's something. And I can't believe that the rest of the people in this community think that that's gonna be the most beautiful thing there is, is to see all this. And every country, California, you look at California, who has more solar than California? If you look at the Ivan Paw, I mean, what do you got, 100,000 acres or something? These panels, millions and millions of them. What have they got? They got blackouts. So now they're having to rebuild gas plants to take the place of the unsubstantial power that they're getting because they can't operate this way. I mean, so you're devastating thousands of acres of land for nothing. Because it's not gonna be, you know, and here's a, why don't you guys lead by example? Why don't you use solar and wind power for the new building? And take the gas out. If you're, if you think that's the way to go, why don't you, why don't you just hook up to the grid with the wind energy and you got the solar and you know, I mean, that's what people in Texas had when they froze to death. So I think, I think it's just time that you take a second look at the solar and what road you're going down with and who you're dealing with.
Thank you, Mr. Eldred. I'm gonna give folks a chance. I'd like an opportunity to respond, and I will try if I can. But I'm gonna go back. Folks online, if they, we still are in citizen comment.
Anybody new?
Anybody new or somebody changed their mind?
Star six, if you're on the phone. We haven't had many people on the.
No, on the phone. Okay, since there isn't, I'll take a minute. First off.
We have somebody, 0796.
Go ahead.
Yeah, good afternoon. This is Lisa Evans from White Salmon. Just in consideration of the childcare and, you know, there's, there's just has been a lot of jobs lost recently due to mandates and everything. Can we not encourage more things in the private sector? You know, I really believe in entrepreneurs and people who love to take care of children. You know, having them start childcare businesses versus throwing that on the shoulders of the government. So I just want to throw that out there. You know, maybe you guys can brainstorm on ideas on how to support people in the community that want to start childcare businesses privately and run with that. I don't necessarily think that's your responsibility. That's not a county responsibility. So that's just my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Just a quickie. This is Commissioner Christopher. The childcare committee is mainly working on that exact thing and trying to get local, small business type of help. It's the government overregulation that's killing it. But anyway, that's, I wouldn't approach anybody's time anyway.
Thank you. We're still in citizen comment. So anybody online who's been uncharacteristic. Okay, so Mr. Eldred, and I will, yeah, if somebody pops up, please, because I'll defer my comments till we're done with citizen comment. But first off, on solar, I think you have the impression that I am some, you know, like I just think solar is the best thing there ever was. I'm not, I have said I am pro-solar insofar as it is in the strategic plan, the economic plan that was referenced before, which I am charged with trying to implement that plan. That plan was not developed by me. It was developed by a whole group of people from across the whole county, stakeholders across the whole county. And they identified solar and renewables, in general, solar and wind specifically, as a priority for development in Click Attack County. So you know, my personal feelings are irrelevant to it. If I'm pro against whatever, it doesn't matter. My job is to try to implement that plan, and I am trying to implement that plan. You do keep making statements about the negative aspects of either Cypress Creek or, and I, that's, I'm gonna put that over here for a minute. But as far as you are stating things as if they are facts, and I don't necessarily know that that is true. I'm not saying that you don't think they're facts.
You want me to send it to you?
Well, you can, but we can all find any fact we want on the internet right now. I could send you, I could probably find facts that the earth is flat, and I could send those to you. That doesn't necessarily mean that's true. And I'm not trying to equate those to each other. I'm sorry. But it is, so it is the fact finding part of a process as when there's actually an application. If Cypress Creek is a bad actor, and they have a history of being a bad actor, that will come up and come out, or it should come out if they actually submit an application to build a project on Knight Road. If they do, that's, I think that is relevant information that we should take an extra hard look at those as far as agreements between the county and Cypress Creek, as far as the lease between them and private. As far as agreements between the county and Cypress Creek, as far as the lease between them and private citizens. That makes me uncomfortable to get into. It's like it's not my job to look after individual, you know, landowners. I hope they get, you know, we always tell people, get legal counsel, have folks look at things because. Um you could be being taken advantage of, but I do believe people need to be responsible for themselves when they're doing that. In their agreements that they're making as far as for tax payments or uh decommissioning plans and stuff, then that is our job. To really look at that. And if they have a history of of not living up to their agreements, that should impact the kind of deal and what. What uh security we require. Okay. Okay, uh I still I'm gonna go. We're out of time, but I am gonna laugh because I used it. So Lynn Mason, go ahead.
Hello, thank you. Um I just want to make a comment on childcare. Um I worked in childcare for many years and actually was a consultant in childcare. And I have to say that a lot of the childcare programs that I helped get established. Were through agencies such as the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, Girls Inc. and big organizations like that. And since Click Attack County doesn't have those organizations, um I do think it is. Uh the role of our local government to get involved with that. Childcare affects families, but it mostly affects women. I've run into a lot of women who have not re-entered the workforce because of the instability. Of children being in school, perhaps not being in school, um having to come home. Um the school hours. Haven't changed in decades to suit uh working families. So childcare is essential. And whether that is uh our local government getting involved in talks or just helping. Bring that conversation to the table. It is very important. Um women are half the population. They are, um I I believe that a lot of the lost uh workers we've had is due to women. Just um having to pick up the pieces when children are at home and they're requiring. A parent at home to educate them, um someone to be there with them and um. It's been a lot on the shoulders of women. So I I think that's a conversation that needs to continue. I know that. Walk Gap has um done some initiatives to help private childcare providers. Um get licensed and set up in their home, but that conversation needs to continue. I know here in White Salmon. There is a huge demand for childcare and um. It's there are there are very few providers and it's just not being addressed. It it's it's a bigger need than I even think that private um providers can address. So that needs to be done on a bigger scale. Um that's all. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Mason.
I would say that that might be something I could talk to Gina about when we talked about Green Energy Act. Is to see if there's any chance once ever that the state can lighten up on its regulations. Uh if they're finally seen the crisis.
Okay, that will conclude our citizen comment period for today. I I want to again thank everybody for their civil tone as was um. Suggested by Ms. Kelsey. I I do appreciate that. It is possible to have discussions about really difficult things. In a way that is not uh combative and. Uh gets everybody, we can we can be passionate, we could be, we need to be angry, but we need to be so in a civil respectful way. So I appreciate that. I'm gonna move us on. Uh this is a time we've set aside for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. Our first is a public hearing to consider approval of the vacation of short flat SPL two thousand and six dash five. Which is located off Oak Ridge um off Oak Ridge Road, Ridgeview and Kerbish Roads in the Houston vicinity. And I'm not gonna read the parcels. Uh I will leave that to to Ms. Lee. The applicants are SDS Company LLC. I'm assuming Denise, you are briefing us on that.
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. So basically, the background is the applicant is proposing to vacate SPL two thousand and six dash fifty one in its entirety. The covenants and road maintenance agreement filed with the short plat would also be will also be vacated. The easement for Valley Road. Will be removed in addition to the view easements on the old lots two and three and the fifteen foot wide utility easement on the old lot two. The applicant submitted an application on August thirty first, twenty twenty one to vacate SPL two thousand and six fifty one. The property is owned resource lands. Property surrounding this subject property are also zoned resource lands. That concludes my. Intro.
Okay, thank you. I will. Now, this is a public hearing, so I will now open the public hearing. To take public testimony uh for or against the proposal. Is there anyone wishing to provide public testimony? If you are online. Yes.
So it says SPL twenty twenty six dot fifty one. I'm assuming that's your twenty twenty six and it's the fifty one short flat. Fifty first short flat, is that correct?
Uh generally. The first is, yeah, that's the year it was done and then the number from the first.
They have a timeline on when they, once they get a short plot of it, they have to do something with it or does it last forever?
Uh they have to, if they get final approval, it has to be, actually, I'm gonna stop us because we're, I wanna stick with the procedure. So. Again, I'm gonna ask one more time because we, there'll be plenty of time for questions. Is there anyone that wishes to provide public comment? Raise your hand. Star six or if you were in chambers, raise your head. Okay, I'm not. Okay. Uh now would be an opportunity to ask questions if you wish.
Say I missed it by three seconds. I should have just waited. So, yeah, I guess my question on the short plating is when they do a short flat, is it good forever unless they want to turn it back into the original parcel? And that's kind of what we're doing here, right?
Right, once it is um uh and I'll I'll leave this to Denise, but once it's it's executed, it's forever. Unless, that's why it has to come back to the board if you want to vacate. Put it back together. And in this case, and that was gonna be one of my questions, I'm assuming it wasn't, I didn't see it in there. SDS LLC still owns all of the lots that were created in the short flat.
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
They created the lots and they did not sell them and they're just trying, just wanting to vacate that short plat and. Turn it back into what it was before they did the short plat. And that's what this vacation is about.
It's unusual.
Right, I'm just trying to figure out. That's how unusual why I'm trying to, I mean, so if they put a road through there, did that have to like take road out or they?
No, they can leave the.
One property just for the road and with the road.
They did install a road as part of the short plat, but that. Uh easement for the road and all the view easements and utility easements and covenants and road maintenance agreements will all be vacated. So. The road will exist, obviously, still. There won't be any lots. It won't go anywhere.
Right, and that's kind of why I'm asking the questions. I've never seen one of these vacated, so it's a learning experience for me, so.
It's very unusual. I don't, I'm not familiar with any we've ever done before because usually, once it's done, it's done.
Yeah, and if you were gonna sell it, just sell all the parcels.
Yeah, or even if you sell one, you're kind of like, then you can't, you can't go backwards from then. It's all set. Because all the parties would, yeah.
But once a plat is finalized and you folks sign it, then it's recorded and it's a done deal after that. And in this case.
In the seating area if Christina's listening. On individual parcels, yeah. Okay.
I apologize. I didn't read all the parcel numbers and I can certainly do that.
No, I I think we can dispense with that parcel. I mean, the uh short plat is the. Yes, that's that has all that encoded within it. So, uh okay, final call for public comment. Hearing none, I will now close the public meeting, public hearing to uh public comment. Deliberation if needed or a motion uh if if we're ready. Which I think there was language in here.
Yes, on the procedure.
Under the procedure, just a minute. I saw it. There it is.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion based on the findings and conclusions discussed today. I move the the request to vacate SPL two thousand and six dash fifty one. Located off of Oak Ridge County Road in the vicinity of Houston, Washington be approved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes. Okay, thanks Denise.
Thank you, Board.
Unusual. Yeah, really, even paid taxes for fifteen years on.
While we have some time, uh can we do the consent?
Yes.
Wouldn't they all be in force management still, even though they're smaller persons?
No, once you pull it out and it's a small parcel, you're.
That is rude. Because there's a eighty minimums or something.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with seven items.
I would second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion a second on the consent agenda. Um any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Yeah, might as well.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we approve pay estimate number six to lead contractors LLC in the amount of one hundred and forty five thousand, four hundred and seventy one dollars and thirty cents. Which excludes retainage in the amount of seven thousand, two hundred and seventy three dollars and fifty seven cents. And includes sales tax in the amount of ten thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and thirty five cents for the total payment amount of one hundred and forty nine thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and eight cents. For the Click Attack County Courthouse entrance improvement project C zero six eight two one.
Second, second, okay. Any discussion? I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on paying that bill? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion pass.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we pay pay estimate number quarter grade works LLC in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and three cents. Excluding twenty two thousand, five hundred and thirty two dollars and fifty cents in retainage. For a total payment amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, one hundred, four hundred and twenty eight, one hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty three cents. For the Old Mountain Road project.
Second, okay, I have a motion in a second. This is on pass number four to great works for the Old Mountain Road project. Any discussion on that one? But are they doing okay?
Very nice.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
You have to cross that one to get home or is it next to you?
I go above my own. Well, I go all the way out on mountains.
Prepayment number one to Interstate Concrete asphalt company DBA in the amount of five hundred and fifty nine thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty three cents. For the Roosevelt grade overlay project.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. This is for pass estimate number one to Interstate Concrete and asphalt. For the Roosevelt grade project. Any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to pay estimate number eighteen to Kirby Naval Health Construction Company in the amount of six hundred and sixty eight thousand, one hundred and fifty one dollars and twenty one cents. Which which excludes retainage in the amount of thirty three thousand, two hundred and seventy nine dollars and fifty seven cents. And include sales tax in the amount of fifty thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and thirty four cents. For a total payment amount of six hundred and eighty four thousand, nine hundred and eighty two dollars and eighty eight cents for the county services to build a project contract number. C zero three one two zero.
I have a motion in a second. This is for pass number number eighteen to Kirby Naval Health Construction. This is on the new county services building. Uh all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion that we pay the accounts payable warrants in the amount of two million, thirty one thousand, nine hundred and eighty five dollars and eighty eight cents. And we pay real benefit warrants in the amount of zero dollars for the date ending October eighteen, twenty twenty one.
Second, that motion. Okay, I have a motion in a second to pay the bills. Any discussion on those? Assuming we have it, so. Anybody laughed after what we just spent. Uh all those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes. And if not, I expect to hear from the treasurer momentarily. Casey, what what can we do for you?
Not if I covered long enough, but I. There is a recent vacancy in the investor's office for a clerical admin one position. And she is requesting verbal to advertise for that to refill the position. It is. A current position, it is funded, it is within our budget, it is continued to be within her budget.
Full time position too.
Full time clerical admin one position. She's requesting to advertise that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, next time, just star six yourself and. All right, it is now one forty five. This time uh we have scheduled for a update, our quarterly update. Pummy River Gorge Commission Executive Director and our uh county appointee. Uh Ms. Sandra Clark, I think hopefully they're both online. We will. Let me look. Oh, there's, I see Christina.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners.
Yes, thank you. Is Sandra, are you? Are you joining us?
She's on a phone number.
If you're on a phone, it's star six. It's a star six nine eight. What is that? Isn't that uh? Die, find out who called you. Good lord, that's a eight gen technology. Does that even still work? Oh, okay. I don't see her.
She's there.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started and hopefully Sandra will join us. If not, you're you're it, Christina, so.
I'm it.
You get to.
Hey, good afternoon, Commissioners for the record. Christina Volnyakovsky, Executive Director of the Columbia of a Gorge Commission. And I have just a really brief update for you today. Uh we have been working diligently on getting the. Gorge twenty twenty management plan uh into an ordinance format for Click Tech County. Um all of the other five counties are also working on their ordinances to implement the new management plan. So they uh there's two hundred and seventy days from the time of secretarial concurrence to get the ordinance done. So everybody's on pretty much the same time schedule and we have been. Meeting with the county planning directors and making sure that uh all the uh new language is clarified. So that they can easily uh translate it into their own ordinance. For Click Tech County, of course, our staff uh is responsible for doing that. And uh we have it already um in draft. We presented the draft to the gorge commission. And they approved uh starting the rulemaking process. So we uh sent in the um. The draft ordinance to the Washington State Register. And uh we also have the draft ordinance on our website under the rulemaking tab. And so uh we will then hold a hearing in December at our December commission meeting. Uh for public comment and then hopefully the it'll be smooth to adopt it. Once it gets adopted, uh then it goes to the Secretary of Agriculture for concurrence. Just like uh we did with the general management plan. So each of the other five counties are on the same schedule and by mid-December, they will be. Approving their ordinance for their county and we will be sending all those to the Secretary for concurrence as well. So it looks like uh implementation will be. Started sometime probably in April or May of next year. So uh since this is all done, I'm going to do my um. My usual pitch that the work is complete and we would love to have you adopt it as well. So that uh you would have the opportunity to implement the um ordinance. For Click Tech County and that that would make you also eligible for the Washington Investment Board Funds for. Loans and grants. Are there any questions?
Thank you for that generous offer. I suspect we'll get back to you.
I I always want to ask because at this point it's done. Uh it's all pretty much completed in December and then, you know, it'd be pretty easy for uh for the Click Tech County Commissioners to adopt it. So it's something for you to discuss at some point.
Thank you. Actually, the, I mean, I would welcome that discussion because this is. you know, this board has not had that conversation. And so if we.
They probably should at some point.
And we probably should.
Just so that it be on the record about.
On the record on, and I think that is, I don't want to make. Yeah, so so we will put some time on our agenda to have a discussion about.
Okay, well, that would be great, so once it's adopted, maybe sometime next spring, we might be able to spend a little extra time to talk about, you know, what what that would mean, so we've had these discussions with the other counties and, you know, sometimes the counties get a little frustrated by by this, as you can imagine, but, you know, we haven't had any problems with any of the other five counties in this adoption process through the new ordinance, so we would just welcome a discussion, since I've been here six and a half years, we haven't talked about it, but we were all in the middle of the management plan review process and trying to do business as usual with Clicktack County permitting, so it really hasn't come up since I've been here, but I think it would be really good just to have an open discussion about it. Um, so the only other thing I wanted to bring up is that one of the new aspects of ordinance is that we are going to allow short-term rentals in the National Scenic Area, they have not been allowed to date. You could have short-term rentals outside the National Scenic Area as per county regulations, but not inside the National Scenic Area. So several of the other counties, sorry. Several of the other counties have their own regulations about it. And so one of the things that we did when we were looking at this, it came up in public comment that, you know, people definitely wanted to have this as an economic opportunity for for being able to rent out their homes, at least for percentage of the year. And so in Hood River County, they have pretty similar regulations where it has to be the primary residence or the permanent residence of the homeowner, and that that's the basic criteria, and then there are a certain number of room nights that are allowed. So it's really supposed to be subordinate to the actual use of the home, because the actual use of the home is the primary residence of the family. It cannot be used for second homes. And each of the different counties are looking at the regulations for the National Scenic Area and trying to figure out how they're going to be permitting it, so we're trying to be as consistent as we can in each county. Wasco County itself did not have any kind of short-term rental rules or permitting process, but they are thinking about it and are developing it. And then I know with Clicktack County, it's pretty much the same thing, Skamania County has already outside the scenic area adopted a process for permitting short-term rentals. And so we're working with them to try to sync things up as well. But in Clicktack County, it's a little bit different because we have this, that we will have this new rule, and what it says is that you can do a short-term rental for up to ninety nights, and the, and it has to be the primary residence of the homeowner, but the homeowner does not necessarily have to be present, physically present at the time of the rental. So it is going to require a permitting process. We would like to have it be consistent with what you are doing in the rest of Clicktack County. At least the permit itself should be similar. I've reached out to Mochi as the Planning Director, and we are scheduled to talk about this in December to see how we can manage it, because in the other counties, they can charge a fee, and then any of the costs or the the rental rate also includes county tax and in certain other fees. So I'm not all that familiar with it yet, since we haven't had an opportunity to do a deep dive into it, but I wanted to bring this up to you because we can't collect any fees, and we can't collect county taxes on anything that we're permitting. So we might need to think creatively about how to make this work in the National Scenic Area and and hopefully have some kind of a consistent approach with the rest of Clicktack County as well. So I would really enjoy having an opportunity to ask you if you have had these discussions at the county commission level, and whether there is any movement in in being able to permit short-term rentals in the rest of the county.
I have a quickie question. How does that work if our county doesn't allow short-term rentals? Can the Gorge Commission do that anyway?
Yeah, they would override us in that area. In that area. Yes, sir.
Christina, I have a few questions, this is Commissioner Anderson. Okay, number one, have you looked to see what portion of Clicktack County is actually eligible under your new rules for short-term rental ordinances, as you set it aside only in certain zoning designations, and most of those zoning designations we don't even have in Clicktack County?
That's a good point, I'll look into that. We haven't even, we haven't even started examining this yet, we just have the languages and the ordinance, but we don't even know how many how many places might actually be eligible for it, because it is in specific zones.
Correct, and from what I've seen, the zones that you had that you allowed it are not primarily in Clicktack County, it's more in certain sections of Underwood and a few other places that you actually allow it. Secondly, what will you do about the short-term rentals that had, as you say, have not been allowed, but have actually been in operation for the last eight to ten years in some instances that people have been doing it? Are you going to be sending cease and desist letters, what is the Gorge Commission's plan in those instances?
Also, an excellent question. We don't have any way of knowing where those are, other than starting to monitor Airbnb and VRBO sites. We have not done that so far because number one, it's capacity issue, but number two, they're just not allowed. And so unless someone has filed a complaint with us, we wouldn't have known that they're existing. But in this case, once we do start a monitoring program for short-term rentals and a permitting process, then then anything that shows up that was not permitted before is is going to have to cease their operations until they get a permit.
If they can get a permit, correct?
Well, they can, yeah, I mean, they will have to meet the criteria, and number one, it has to be in the right zone and land use zone, and then number two, it has to be the primary residence, so if somebody has a, you know, a rental home out here that they're using only for vacation rentals, that won't be allowed.
So so in essence, if you do your homework, you may find that there may not be any short-term rentals allowed within Clicktack County based on the zoning designations that you chose that without apparently doing your due diligence on figuring out where they currently are by looking at Airbnb and the other platforms before you guys authorized the chose to make your decisions on the zoning designations in the first place. So it may be, what I'm saying is, it may be a moot a moot point for Clicktack County, other than the fact we've been, we've been ascertaining the transient tax funds from these some of these properties for the last ten or fifteen years, and and now you're saying that they're no longer, so if you could do a dive to figure out which ones, and it's pretty easy to look on VRBO and Airbnb, so that you can get back to us with how much our transient tax and lodging tax is going to go down based on how mu- how many of these are now illegal that have been paying taxes for the last ten years, that would be great for the county so that we can, we can plan and permit.
I understand that, but they, you know, it's really difficult to figure out the answer to that question when we haven't been monitoring it because it has not been allowed. If it if it's been going on, it's not something that we've been tracking because we just haven't allowed it. So I'm not sure if it's my responsibility to figure out how many taxes you will lose because of this.
So so have you shut down Airbnbs throughout the Gorge Scenic Area previously to this? Because I'm sure some have been turned into.
We have never had, well, in Clicktack County, we have not had any complaints, and in the other counties, none of the planning directors have, since they haven't been allowed, they haven't been monitoring them. And they've not received complaints about them.
There's never been a complaint about a single Airbnb within the Gorge Scenic Area.
Well, to my knowledge, I will qualify it to say to my knowledge, but as we discussed all this with county planners, there have, there was not problems were not really raised about it, the only the only monitoring issue that will be perhaps challenging will be the ninety-room nights.
What is your plan for that?
Well, they have to register, you know, on their, they have to have a permit for ninety nights, and then there are revenue, revenues that have to be collected for those. So, you know, like I said, there is going to be monitoring of those rentals.
If I can, Christina, all right, so are you planning on this process? And in this case, it will be you in Clicktack County, at least for the foreseeable future, that will be said.
That's right.
So you will have to, I assume they'll have to, I mean, I've looked at all the draft language as far as in the management plan update, where they're going to have to provide a report, I guess annually, that, you know, kind of certifies their ninety-day, ninety, that they didn't exceed ninety-room nights with some data to support that.
Yeah. We don't want to make it really cumbersome, but, you know, the whole idea is that they that these are subordinate to the residential use of the house, so.
This this is a bigger question, because I I guess I could have followed the the discussion, I'm just curious from the scenic area, the management plan updates point of view, what were the impacts that the commission was trying to mitigate by? I mean, what it, what was the problem that you were trying to fix by limiting the number of, you know, to ninety days versus you know, more than ninety, I mean, because, you know, frankly, I understand that if your point is this is a subordinate use, I I'm not exactly sure why you care if it's a subordinate use or not. The impact both scenically and, you know, on, you know, the the neighborhood is the same to me, it would appear if it's somebody that's if if it's, you know, I'm the one living in the house, or I'm having somebody else live in the house, but I'm I'm just curious what was the, what drove the discussion at the at the commission level at to kind of settle on that ninety days as the magic number?
Um, I think with Hood River County, they also have that, and again, the driving force is that it is not the primary use of the house, it is a, it is a residence, you know, with a family that lives there. And and so in some cases, the temporary nature of, you know, the rentals, it can be disruptive, and so a lot of people from public comments, and this isn't just here, this is everywhere, including, you know, all communities that are dealing with the short-term rentals. They want to make sure that number one, there's longer-term rentals that are available that aren't being turned into short-term rentals because of the housing issue, and number two, that they want, you know, people are living as families in these communities, and they just don't always want to have, you know, loads of different tourists coming through. I think that they did want to allow some short-term rentals, though, because they feel that that is an economic opportunity for the homeowners to get some additional money, like when they're traveling and and visiting other places and being tourists that they want to, you know, be able to earn a little bit of money by renting out their homes. But it's supposed to be a subordinate use, it's not supposed to be, you know, a full-time income generator. So that's why they limited the number of nights and then made sure that it's the primary residence.
Okay, thank you.
So I would, I would just like to ask, is there going to be any way like what Hood River County did, or Hood, the city of Hood River and Hood River County, because they didn't have regulations in place when this began, they had a kind of a grandfathering clause in place for those people that are currently doing it, and they may not fit into your your specific zones that you decided, which I can't find any records on why you you chose certain zones, but that's going to have a huge financial impact on on families that are currently living in Clicktack County that, you know, they have to sublease a portion of their property out in order to make the the payments on the properties, otherwise, you know, that that's a difficult situation, and and I've heard from a lot of constituents that are very upset, so I'm trying to understand what people have as a potential recourse to continue living where they currently live if you're going to unilaterally, you know, remove their ability to make income off of those parcels.
Yeah, I appreciate that perspective, but this doesn't impact long-term rentals at all, so if somebody is subleasing a home and and they need it for longer than ninety days, they can, the homeowner can rent that out for a longer term, this impacts the the homeowner in terms of having short-term rentals for up to ninety days a year.
I think the problem is going to be the zoning.
Well, the zoning is not something that we had any control over, the zoning is the zoning.
No, no, it shows which zones you will allow it in, rather than saying it's it's in all zones, you're saying that there are zones that we are not going to allow any short-term rentals in. And one of those is the ag zone, I believe, which, if I'm correct, that that then says that, you know, you you have no, no ability to bring in additional revenue for your small farm that you were barely able to make it without this. And in, that's that's difficult for me to fathom your your reasoning rationale for for choosing zones like a five-acre zone, you allow it in, but the ag zone for the small hobby farms and small farms, it's not allowed. They, I I'm trying to understand if there's a way that the people who have been doing this can continue to, or they're going to lose their ability to live on their property because they just can't make, they can't make a pencil otherwise.
Well, I'd be happy to, if you would like to give me some specific questions, I can circle back and get the answers to you, to show you what the thinking is, I can go back to the record and describe it, but, you know, the land uses that we've had in terms of the short-term rentals, those are the ones that the commission chose. So I'm happy to provide you more information in the next update after the ordinance is approved.
How would that work, another certification question? How would that work if a short-term rental that was on a incorrectly zoned according to the Gorge Commission property, and the Gorge Commission sent them a cease and desist, and they said no? What would be the consequence to that?
Well, I'm really hoping that we don't get to that situation, because then that would require some kind of a compliance and enforcement action.
Yeah, they have the, it would be the the commission, would they have enforcement authority?
The Gorge Commission's code complaints officer.
They can issue fines and, yes.
In Clicktack County.
In Clicktack County, yes, they can. Or may have authority outside of Clicktack County, I'm not sure. If, I guess if you got, anyway, we're wandering off as far as.
No, that's.
We know they do in Clicktack County, that's all I care about at this point, that's us.
I don't have any Gorge Commission land in my district.
I have almost all of it. I'm well-versed in, it's, you know, and this is just a general question, and it's not, I don't want to throw rocks at the commission, but it is, you know, when you're, you know, short-term rentals is just one issue, one item that I think, you know, sometimes you're trying to make something seem like we have, you know, acknowledged the economic development potential of things, and I'm thinking of short-term rentals, I'm thinking of commercial events, different things that there is an economic development that we can point to those, but it's, you end up in a point where from a practical standpoint, you end up with, it's just not practical, there's, I mean, I I've looked pretty extensively through the commercial event section, you know, and the changes that were made or proposed that will be adopted, you know, in the updates, and, you know, there's a reason why I am unaware of a single, and you can correct me if you're wrong, at least in Clicktack County, of a winery or anybody that is, actually has a permit to do commercial events, because by the time, you know, there is, the the, you have the requirements to be able to do it, it's, it, you would lose money actually putting on a commercial. it's, it, you would lose money actually putting on a commercial event if you complied with all of that. And so it looks like, well, gee, look, we, we changed this. You can have commercial events at, you know, at wineries, at, uh, bed and breakfast, you could do all this stuff. But in reality, none of those businesses are actually doing those. And so from a practical, again, I understand you're trying to be responsive, but it, when it, when you get through the whole process, it's from a practical standpoint, it's not responsive. And I suspect we're going to see much of the same thing with short-term rentals is that, for, it, for the few folks that really are only interested in it as some supplemental income for them when they're traveling, they're spending their summers in Europe and they wanna rent out their house, it will work fine for them. But for folks that were kind of relying on it as supplemental income to support either their farm operation or other small business, it's, it's not really gonna work out for them. And again, I'm not, I'm not chucking rocks at the commission or you, it's just, sometimes there is a disconnect between the actual impacts, the economic impacts and, and the level of, uh, requirements.
Well, there's an ideality.
I don't expect a comment back, Christina.
I'll give him his little squish stress.
Now, we'll, we have something else to talk about for that, but.
Yeah, so I'll circle back with Mochi about this in December and, uh, we'll get you a, uh, update with some of the questions that you've posed today. Anything else?
Well, I have something and I, I am reluctant to even bring it up, but, oh, now I've said it, so now I have to. Uh, and actually, it will, it will likely be more, uh, just that we can have a, I guess, a private conversation. I, um, I'm a little distressed at the commission's, again, I'm getting it secondhand, but I think it's fairly accurate. Uh, the additional economic development dollars that came that were in the federal appropriation, the two million dollars, that USDA purposefully, from my, cuz I worked on it, uh, did not put the scenic area, uh, requirements to that money. And I know there is, uh, there's been pushback on the part of both, uh, you know, I will say the traditional Washington folks that get the money, uh, county that happens to lie to the west of us. And, uh, as far as the, the, then argument that the, you know, Click Attack County should be ineligible for those dollars, um, just as we are for the other economic development dollars that are tied to the scenic area. And that, that is not our understanding, that was not our understanding when we advocated for this funding with USDA through the federal appropriation. And it's really disappointing that this is yet again, an opportunity to kind of, try to have a tool, a lever to, with the, um, uh, you know, with those dollars. So I think that's a difference of opinion that, uh.
So that isn't getting split now?
Well, we don't, uh, that's not the, that's my understanding, that is not the, the commission's, um, um, perspective on this.
We should have a court say.
So I think we, we need to have a conversation about that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, and I believe you are, you know, you think it should be tied to scenic area stuff and that's, and that, that's fine. You can have your position, but it's like if USDA world, USDA did not put those terms in this, these dollars, then that, um, I, I just don't think it is. And I think it will be, it will change the conversation between Oregon and Washington. If, because the, um, McCade, you know, that, which I'm on that board, and we had this discussion about this and the, that was part of the reason why the split between Washington and Oregon was, there's two million, one million will be spent in Oregon and one million will be spent in Washington. Well, if the one million in Oregon is split between multiple counties, and it ends up being the one million in Washington can only go to one county, again, that unnamed county to the west of us, that does not, if I was in Oregon County, I would be a little, uh, I would be a little miffed about that. And, um, so.
Well, I have to say on the record, I will give you my interpretation.
Okay.
And then we can have a further discussion on it. But, uh, all along, the delegation for Oregon and Washington, uh, as they were pursuing the, this additional appropriation, have always said that it was part of meeting the federal promise of the National Scenic Area Act. They've always said that. And, uh, when they released, when they were successful in getting this funding, uh, they always said, and even Senator Merkley the other day during this press conference, said that it was the fulfilling the federal promise of the National Scenic Area Act. And when you look at the National Scenic Area Act, it specifically says that, um, the funding is for these loans and grants that are then, uh, certified by the gorge commission as meeting the purposes of the act. And so that's what we've been doing. And then it also very explicitly said that if you haven't adopted the ordinance, then if a county doesn't adopt the ordinance, then they're not eligible for that. So the gorge commission's position is that, you know, the National Scenic Area Act is federal law, the USDA rural development program is a federal program. The agreement says that, uh, you know, McCade has to follow all federal, state and local laws and rules to enact this. So I don't know how this is all going to shake out, but I'm happy to talk about it further. I've had several discussions on this. I have read the scope of work. I've read everything I can possibly read about this. And my conclusion does not change that they intend, their intent was that it fulfills the two million dollars left over from the ten million dollar authorization of the National Scenic Area Act. It's just going through a different, uh, federal agency as opposed to the Forest Service that's going through rural development. So that's our official position. And how this plays out with McCade, I'm not really sure. Because in the end, it's, uh, their grant with USDA.
Okay, I'm just saying that, I'm just putting you on record, this is a big issue for us that we're, and you can, you know, it's, it's fine, it's just yet another, um, yeah, we don't like being prod. I, I can, I can tell you, at least for me, the chance to have access to a million dollars of economic development dollars is not, it's not much of a prod for me. And it has not been, you know, Click Attack County has done just fine without access to the, the dollars. Well, no, it would be, we would be, we would submit projects and maybe we would get some and maybe we wouldn't, but it's, um, we certainly administer all kinds of grant, federal grants that come to us and for economic development that are not tied to the scenic area. And so, you know, that, that's fine, but it will, I will just say it is going to cause some tension uh, between Click Attack County and the rest of its McCade partners. Um, because we did advocate for these dollars with that, uh, understatement, cuz that's how it was, um, presented to us all along. And so, and I'm not saying the, uh, the appropriation happened because Click Attack County advocated for it. I'm, I'm not so arrogant to think that our, our advocacy made a difference one way or the other. Uh, but it, it, it's just like we, it feels like bait and switch to us. And, um, uh, we're not real pleased about that, but.
Well, I understand that position, Commissioner, and, uh, we advocated for it too. Since I've been here, I've been advocating for that money. And I did also write a support letter with the understanding that it would be, even though it's, uh, coming through USDA rural development fund, that it is, it, the operations would be the same as with the, um, the other funding through, uh, the revolving loan fund through the Forest Service. So it was a huge surprise to us when there, what, when it wasn't going to follow the same national scenic area federal law that we have been enacting. So, anyway, we can talk a little bit more about that if you'd like, depending on how things move forward.
I know, anything else? No.
No.
No, I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay, well, I'll look forward to our next quarterly update and see what, how things move forward.
All right, well, enjoy the rest of your day.
Okay. All right, bye.
Bye. We are gonna move on.
I don't know what's worse, following citizen comment with me or following that with Dave.
I did, yeah, I knew it was coming, so. I had heard rumblings, uh, a couple of weeks ago. No, just, and I was hopeful, but it was just somebody agitating so that they could have a hundred percent of the Washington money, which totally makes sense. I totally do that too. So I'll just remember, I, but I will remember.
Partners to the west?
Yes. So if you see a bus coming by, they, they, they definitely need better than you know. I know, I still, yeah. Hi, Sharon. We're gonna continue this really easy topic.
Oh, so we might need to come up with an answer before.
Before two thirty, so. So we will continue our conversation.
With more time for me to think on this and, and sleep on this and, and what have you. I guess the biggest part of it for me is no matter how much I wanna help, I don't wanna set a precedent. So, uh, because that could carry on for years and decades. So on this matter, I'm gonna have to, you know.
And so in terms of the material that I emailed out, um, and what I was discussing about the funds that we received that were specific, and they are very specific to those positions, that particular position, and the funding we received for, for the service that are provided for the home care aides. The, and with the management bulletins too, that has, you know, that increase has to be applied directly to wages and benefits. And so in the past, we have done like a wage increase, but knowing where we were financially and hoping to not be in the position of ending the program, but realizing that's not the case. And then we are ending the program. Those funds are something that we got really in addition to, to be applied specifically to those staff. Not like it's, oh, we got, and we have a lot of other COVID money that we've received specific to like nutrition services and things like this, but this one was, is specifically tied to caregivers and their benefits. And I feel like with eliminating, you know, again, for full-time, luckily it's not fifteen, which could have been at previous points in time, or twenty, staff that at least feeling like with the dedication they've had from, you know, six to thirteen years of service, to be in a position where they're, they cannot get benefits at the, at a new employer for ninety days. So they've got this trust of, oh, now I have to go and see if I can get some insurance on the exchange, have the money to pay for that when they're not in a high-paid position as it is. Feeling like if we could preserve, again, provide them with the severance with those funds that were specifically designated for home care wages and benefits, home care workers, wages and benefits, they could Cobra their insurance until they're eligible through their new employers. And, um.
Right, my worry is, same regard, somebody that might work in this building that doesn't qualify for a medical or religious exemption, uh, then asked because of this, they want some of those COVID dollars that were given to the county to pay for theirs, um, severance or, or medical. And that's the precedent I'm worried about. Uh, is it wouldn't be landfill dollars, it would be COVID dollars that would pay for these other, that's the precedent that I'm worried about, so.
And I guess I view it as different. It's not like, okay, this is, the county got a couple million in COVID, you decide what to do. This is very.
To explain it to each one of them.
Very clearly, and I'd be happy.
Right, I, I would play the devil's advocate in that I think this is a different circumstance where the dollars that came in were tagged specifically to those exact positions. Cuz I hadn't really thought about somebody making that, cuz that had me like, oh, yeah, cuz I was, it was actually gonna be easier for me to, um, actually advocate to do this, not because it's not the.
Originally, yes, because of those funds, but, yeah.
But I do, I do worry about the precedent, but the, I'm not that concerned about it. Because again, the, these dollars that came in were specific to those positions. And honestly, if there, we had the same situation in another department that got extra grant dollars to fund a thing that we didn't expend on that, and then we had to provide, you know, we were gonna do Cobra with that money, I would be okay with that. I'm, I'm not aware of that happening anywhere else. I think this is unique to this.
Right.
So we got general COVID dollars.
And even if we look at precedent within my department with these particular positions, typically, I can pull historically, over the years that we've had these positions and when we had management bulletins that specifically addressed pay and benefit increases, we've done actual pay hourly rate increases for those specific employees, separate from everybody else. They've been treated, they have a whole separate line item. Similar to how, um, the.
Clarification for me, you're stating, if I'm getting it right, that these dollars are sitting in account to pay these workers, that these dollars can't be used for something else. And if we don't pay these workers, we have to give maximum.
No, what it is, is that we, we were provided the money, the extra money for their wages and benefits. Because our benefits cost more than the state reimburses us. Where the money went is the nineteen thousand dollars was just nineteen thousand dollars that we, it lowered our level of subsidy.
Right.
To those individuals.
Right.
So in a sense, it's sitting in fund balance. It should, although I've probably already been accounted for as far as in your, your fund balance at the end, as far as, you know, all the money's going in, money's going out. And so there's nineteen thousand dollars of that you, we had not planned on receiving that we did. And so we just paid the benefits and pocketed the nineteen, which is, again, we're allowed to do that because we spent more than nineteen thousand dollars.
Because we could, just for the same regard, use that money to pay ourselves for, for paying the benefits.
Yes, uh, and that's what we're, that's, unless we do something different. Right.
So.
Did we give temporary COVID rate increase per hour to the employees?
No.
We have not.
That applied, that's been used to, so when I was showing what we are actually paying in insurance per month, what the rate of the unit rate that's applied to that, and then the difference, and then what we got in the additional revenue that made us whole.
Right.
So, um.
So for a short, brief, shiny moment, the state was actually providing enough reimbursement for the benefit to actually pay for the benefit that we, we were providing.
Almost?
Almost.
This, this money is sitting in fund balance. And on next year's budget, they need a certain dollar of landfill funds, they would need less funds if this was sitting in fund balance.
Yes.
For me, I have to, I have to look at this as that, this is complicated for us to understand. The next person that comes through a situation like this isn't gonna care where the money comes from. They're just gonna be, you gave severance package to this group and you're not, you're, you should be giving it to me. Um, I'm looking at, you know, all of the state transportation workers who just got let go, who are not getting a severance package, who are not, who do not have jobs lined up for the next three months, um, who are sitting in a really ugly situation. And there's no medical, there's, there's, and, and they don't, and they don't even qualify for unemployment. Um, at least these people, if they don't get a job, um, they wouldn't qualify for unemployment, correct? Uh, whereas all the others don't. So these people have a significant advantage over what everybody else is dealing with.
Except they're not choosing to be, I mean, they're, they've got vaccinated, so, you know, but that's.
They're being fired. I mean, we are, I mean, let's call it what it is, we are eliminating the position there, the, the, so we're, we're down.
Yeah, and we're talking about one of the lower wage positions that has not, does not have kind of a bit more of the, protection to be able to carry over.
Yes, sir. No, no, I was, they weren't, I, I clarified. No, no, I was, they weren't, I I clarified that they were not fired, but their position is being it was eliminated. I mean, it's in a default, I mean, it's this it's the same thing. And I know in the HR world, being fired has a specific thing, like that's a disciplinary. I know the lawyers are listening, I got, nobody was fired, nobody was fired for cause, the position was eliminated, the job's not there anymore on January. There. But they will be eligible for unemployment because of that. If they quit, then they're not.
So the timing's really good. Same thing, cause otherwise, that probably would have been.
Here, I'll give it to Sharon.
Very difficult decision for me. But when when I gotta come in on Thursday and make hard choices. I guess today was my first one.
From my understanding.
I think it's different. I think I would, I would, I would do the Cobra. But it takes two, so I guess it's no.
Okay. So the other, I guess, piece though, that there was discussion on was how we're addressing keeping, you know, in terms of our end date. There was discussion on, you know, because the our license and notice was given to end, you know, the home care service business of December thirty first, and so obviously people choose to leave before then, but in terms of the drop dead date of the thirty first, what do we do? In the interim, when we have, you know, if we lose clients because they are gonna be transitioning potentially to a new provider as they come available, cause there's some that don't have providers yet available. But then we have the the employees that are on the payroll that are supposed to meet thirty, they have to be thirty hours a week. Typically to maintain benefits and through, you know, through that end date. So how do we address that in terms of, you know, that their end date is the thirty first unless they choose to depart before then? But how do we fill? How do we address those hours piece? I mean, do we put them to work in, you know, have them doing office stuff? And that too, but I mean, we're not gonna be able to bill for that. I mean, in home care, we won't get.
Right, you're not gonna get reimbursed.
Reimbursement, so it would be coming out, you know, so then it could tap into, I guess. Some of that fund balance that would be created from not subsidizing the other. So I just have to figure out, I have to talk to these people and tell them right, how this is playing out, so.
So you don't know, you haven't heard from any of them when they're leaving or if they're planning on staying the whole time or leaving when they don't have the hours to work anymore.
Well, so that's what I'm asking in terms of how do we address that, cause it's not, I mean, so we have some people like the part timers. And folks that are gonna, they're gonna transition to another employer process, but the the full time positions in terms of, you know, they wanna keep all time as long as they can into this, obviously, they will be looking for other work as well, so they could end up getting hired. And maybe depart sooner, and then we would shuffle some clients that way, but we're also talking about two ends of the county. Clients and caregivers, and so we do have some that do not plan to look for other employment, right, they're gonna just work till they're to the end of December. And provide.
Are these on the, are these on the books as full time?
Full time at thirty, yes.
I mean it.
Thirty hours a week is what is full time for. They have to have at least thirty. I mean, most of them have been over that typically, but they're to have at least thirty hours a week.
Right.
A hundred and twenty hours a month.
Well, for me, the least we can do is if we told you you would have a job until December thirty first, then you have a job until December thirty first.
And and now some people have some vacation or whatever they could.
Cause it could be though, that I mean, that would be a management issue for you, as if they, if somebody does leave or they usually, you know, you might reshuffle some of their clients to make sure they.
Right, and that would be the plan, but it's.
I I would say that with the assumption that you will do whatever you can to try to move people around to keep everybody without having to resort to something else. As far as, cause there would be cause that that just.
So you your your goal essentially, or your want is to pay them through the thirty first. And then they can cash out their vacation and.
No, no, I'm saying that they can use.
No, I just think if people have, you know, we told them they were gonna have a job until that we were closing the program at the end of December. And I think we should honor that, and we should close the program out at the end of December, and that's.
And I guess I need to clarify, my ask is if they exhaust vacation and sick.
Right.
Well, that's why I was hearing that from you, but.
If they exhaust that, because every, there's different people at different levels.
Like I will find you something, I I'm sure you have other work.
Cause it's like, that's why I'm like, wait a minute, you're saying, don't take the vacation stuff, and you can cash it out on the first, and you're saying exhaust that and we'll then we'll cover
Right.
everything else up to the thirty.
Right, that's what I heard.
Okay, no, I, that's different.
Other than it wouldn't be nice, yeah, if they could pay.
I know. Yeah.
Well, I I just, I heard two different things.
Again, that's just my perspective, which means nothing by myself, so. So what what would you like?
Well, that's why I was trying to figure out where you were coming from on the vacation. To see if it was different where she was coming from. But it sounds like they were the same. So with that, yeah, I'm fine with keeping them on until thirty first. Now, if they quit early, if they decide to go to a different company on November thirty first, I don't wanna double pay them.
No, I mean, and again, there there's nobody gonna get paid if they're, you know, people then are are voluntary.
But that's kind of the thing, I also don't wanna pay them if they're sitting home, so I would like to see that.
No, no, the idea would be, we would, yeah, we could have them assist.
Packing up and getting ready to move.
Assist with, you know, meal deliveries. Client services, and so.
Right.
We have plenty of things to do.
I'm sure you do.
Okay, so they can't tell, okay.
Which is, that's why we're doing it. It's the least we can do.
Okay. Okay, and then on. I had also wanted to. So I have a resignation that I got for my information and assistance coordinator, ADR C, you know, disability resource person in the Golden Dale office. Has given notice, is gonna be leaving in November, has given thirty day notice. And so in, I have existing personnel, an existing staff person who's actually our admin assistant position. And backup transportation coordinator at a Golden Dale that is expressed interest in the position, and she already does provide support and backup in that too, and I would be interested in promoting from within rather than advertising out, and I know she would, and then I could also get training on board, started relatively quickly with my existing person that's gonna be leaving.
And then eventually fill the position of the person.
And then, and then I also though have an interest of actually one of our in home care position people that I'm very confident in in terms of, that is interested to. And then the position that would be shifting out of. And so my question I had, you know, I had called, you know, Casey to ask, do we have to, you know, post this, do we have, or if I know based on my existing workforce and staff and folks that have expressed interest, can I do a promotion from within? This lot, and we have to get permission was to talk to the board.
I can't read your eyes, I don't know.
And we talked to the board about it.
Oh, so come talk to the board.
Yeah.
No, yeah. I mean, I would support, I mean, generally.
And we've done several.
Already know.
Yeah.
Puts one of these in home care people to work preferably right away, right?
And then that maybe.
Right, there would be the transition.
Clients and the whole thirty hour thing becomes a non.
A viewpoint, yeah.
So.
So, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I can do that as a permission to go ahead and do.
Say you could do that.
Promotion from within of existing staff.
Now, I guess the only question would be where they start out at step and whatnot, that might be a.
And there is a formal process for that. There is a way that that's determined within HR. It was more the issue of do I have to openly do this, especially if I do know in terms of the skill sets and the know the work history, cause these are people that supervising.
Times that you're gonna bring in, this is one of your full four 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 full times was kind of a.
That could potentially, I I would have, I didn't wanna have a discussion in detail until I knew what had to be what was okay.
So typically in other departments, what would happen is if they don't post externally, it's an internal posting of the department only.
Right.
And it would be.
That's what I was gonna say, I know they, I've seen that in other organizations where you post internally before, and then if you don't, cause obviously you'd wanna stick with, if you could inside the department, they already know if there's somebody qualified it to promote from within, and then.
Yeah, I don't really wanna lead people on by doing a posting if we really already know who we're hiring. I mean, it's.
Well, that's where I felt like in terms of the.
Well, other other departments have had the same kind of ideas though, and and so the the thought was to to.
Do an internal posting.
Do I have to internally post it?
Right.
For a week and then, okay.
Sharon may not know that there's other employees in our department that are interested.
I I know other people are, but yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, okay, yep. That all said.
So a little silver lining.
Yep. She should have opened with that.
Yeah.
Cause that was less cost to be an original.
Okay. So seven thirty first end date, no severance.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I tried.
You did try.
Is there anything else?
We're arguing.
My money's on Casey.
I don't wanna spend the money too to advertise when I know, yeah, so.
We'll just post it.
If you want, but I won't make it easy.
Well, right, I mean that.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Prosecuting attorney. You are in the house. We did.
Did it all get approved?
Except stuff that you wanted. I said, I don't even need to know if he wanted it, then it's a hard pass on that.
So is recycled batteries.
Yes, it all passed.
So we had a criminal that on Monday, there was individual sentence that had a trial two weeks ago, Robert Thysel. But incident intoxicated, he law enforcement responded to a call of domestic violence, he greeted them by pointing a rifle at the officer. Whose wife immediately jumped in the way, basically saved his life. He communicated through his counsel that he refused to plead, according to the act that he took, he was charged assault to with an enhancement for using a firearm. And so went to trial, he was justly convicted and sentenced. He had no prior felony history, underlying assault, too, he's looking at a range of three to nine months, but the firearm enhancement was a mandatory additional thirty six months.
Oh, wow.
No good time is allowed, so the judge sentenced him to a mid range on the underlying offense of six months, plus thirty six months, will be forty two months. Thirty six of which he will not get a day of good time allowed. So we're quite happy with that result, admired the restraint Detective Sergeant Eric Anderson in that case. Could have ended up substantially worse with the loss of life, luckily, that did not happen either for the officer or for Mr. Thysel, he should be eternally grateful to the wife that he beat that after that evening for saving his life by standing in the way while he was pointed. Officer, and then also expressed appreciation for Teller, that they called him Melon, he provided the backup to Detective Sergeant Anderson, so well done to those two individuals. And the twelve members of the jury that found a just result. On Monday, we also terminated the participation of Matthew Dunsmore in the drug court on underlying charge of burglary in second degree, he had somewhat reluctantly agreed to his participation in drug court, he has substantial criminal history. Mostly involving controlled substances and burglaries, multiple burglaries on his rap sheet, he he failed miserably, then about six months, he was terminated. He was sentenced to a term of fifty seven months incarceration under offices of the the happy auspices of the Department of Corrections. He was the last participant in the Clickcat County Drug Court Program. It's the drug court program is now no longer a program offered in Clickcat County for various reasons, principally the vast majority of cases that have been accepted and been successful on a drug program could not gain entry at this point due to the Blake decision that struck down the controlled substances, reduced it to a misdemeanor. Various other reasons, including I think some concerns over comprehensive, but then even the driving driving factor was, this is a program that was I think achieved a lot of good results for the community, that was a good reducing a program and to reduce recidivism, I think was mostly successful over twenty five year history, but it was a program devised to assuage the impact of the harsh drug laws and the different legal and political calculations that were in effect twenty five years ago, they're simply not present now. There is no war on drugs in the state of Washington, there is no harsh effects from prosecutions and enforcement of controlled substance statutes in the state. There is a plethora of resources available to any individual that wishes to undertake them. So this line that it's sometimes still people persist in this notion that there's a scarcity of resources. Not if you want it, there are plenty of resources for people that want it. And so yeah, so we're done with that program. We had yet another DPA that the DPA definitely prosecuting attorney position's been open for quite some time, we've had yet another candidate accept the job, and then after withdrawal, the acceptance for the inability to find housing, this is becoming a real issue. That the payment is simply was not sufficient to live in a white salmon area, there just wasn't anything available within a forty five to sixty minute commute. That's the fourth staff person that's withdrawn acceptance from my office last twelve months, principal because of housing issues.
Are they all trying to look for white salmon housing, or are they looking over here?
They look here, that's not their first preference, especially for the attorneys, the it's not their, not their first preference, but there's just anything around here. So so that's what I know on that, we'll keep plugging along the best we can, and thanks to the the hard work of oh, speaking of which, I saw the hard work of Chief Deputy David Wall for doing the trial. And then Sammy Samantha Cabeas or the lone district court deputy right now doing, staying diligently on top of the case law has been reduced, actually much more than we anticipated. I did adopt the policy of reducing suspended license tickets to no valid operating, not operating operating vehicle without about license, which is an infraction, about two hundred and fifty dollar infraction. So when we reduce that to an infraction on the first appearance, there is no longer any need for appointment of any public defender or any counsel, they're not entitled to an attorney on an infraction. I was anticipating about forty percent case load reduction in district court, I think we're at sixty percent. They quite realized how frankly, large, the the suspended. Uh, I didn't quite realize how, frankly, um, large the, the suspended license case load. And unfortunately, you know, the two courts had different approaches, uh, the principal concern was some of the activities in West District. Whereas now become routine for the two public defenders down there to, you know, bill five, six hundred dollars to taxpayers. So they can quote unquote research constitutional issues on every single, uh, suspended license case, so just, just, we had enough of it. Uh, and the legislature has sunsetted this for becoming a fraction next year anyways, uh, so they're just. You know, we're having to allocate our resources to making decisions that we probably would not have made two years ago, but we have to at this point, uh, the backlog. It's still substantial, we're, we're making hot progress on towards that, uh. And doing our best on that, uh, but, you know, again, I mean, it's that person short and an attorney short, uh, it's, we're, we're doing the best we can. Um, so, be happy to take any, uh, questions or, um, any, anything and open, and then I do have a. Uh, uh, item or two to discuss some executive.
Opening session. Sorry, I'm listening. You're the executive. Okay, I don't have anything either, so I guess with that. Uh, and unless, actually before we go into executive, is there gonna be any other?
Not for me.
I would just like to remind, uh, everyone online that, uh, the town hall meeting is this evening at seven o'clock has been canceled, for the record. Okay, so this will be, uh, we will go into executive session, we have no other items on the agenda after this. So we will, we will not be taking any actions. Any final actions, thank you, thank you, Mr. Prosecutor, correcting me, um, after we come out of executive session, and so.
Review with eight oh five.
We do have radio, so, uh, we, uh, so our, after we come out, we, we will just adjourn the regular meeting until Thursday.
I believe the Director of Human Relations is asked for an executive after mine.
I have one schedule already, for the labor relation.
And we'll have an executive and an executive and then we'll close them.
Then we'll close, so I would ask folks to, uh, leave, we are going to executive session in accordance with the RCW. Forty two point three zero point one one zero, friend one, friend I, uh, to discuss, um. Uh, current litigation.
Yeah, and I only need five minutes.
Five minutes.
For my topic, unless there's topics you guys wanna discuss.
I don't have anything. Just be five minutes. So if you wanna stop the recording.